Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to June 10th School Board of Mayfair County Workshop. Want to officially call this meeting to order. I'm number two. We did have some agenda amendments, basically adding to the workshop the presentations and things like that, shuffle around some stuff as well, taking an item from this workshop and moving it back to next workshop. We do have a public comment before we get going with our first item, which is the Audit Committee. So, public comment, Keenan Wooton, come on up.
This was the zoning workshop?
Yeah, we'll, you can comment on the zoning, absolutely.
Okay. I've been in this fight for awhile, rezoning, and then now we're here. Speak primarily for the central corridor, old East Bradenton, East Bradenton Park, 13th Avenue, Dream Center, Tropicana area, old East Manatee, Mixon, Citrus Meadows, I can keep going, Rainin Housing Authority. That neighborhood was all traditionally Southeast High School. And I talked to our board member Cindy Spray, she's our representative, she listens to us. These were decisions made in the past that not everybody agreed with, but I think we have time to do it, hit it right this time. Our kids are the most bus kids out of any neighborhood in the district. I've looked it up. We're one of one, one of two districts in the state that still does that, bus kids way over here, way over there. I did some research on that. And we want to be returned, our community wants to be, especially high school, we want to be returned back to Southeast High School. And that will free up buses to help the district out and other areas. I think we're there. I went to a workshop, I think we're close, but we need to really get this this right so our neighborhood returns back to our home school. Neighborhood is full of rich athletes, educators, doctors, lawyers, and that was our home school. Our car wash was named after Southeast. And our neighborhood just got split up and they don't really contribute to other communities. When they come back to our community, their parents, it's hard to get out there to various other high schools. I counted, we have about three high schools blessing out our community. And that's just not fair now. I get up in the morning, I go jog, I see kids waiting out Citrus Meadows, I see kids waiting to go to Lakewood Ranch High School at 5:30, 6:00 in the morning. And my mom wouldn't have went for that, went for that in the 90s when I was coming through. So, we have the time to get it right now and the time is here. And I appreciate all the public input and where we're going with it, but I want to, definitely, we want to stay vigilant of these things that are going on in our community. And that was our, that was our, our school. And as alumni, and I'm not saying I'm just taking up for that school, but that's, that's my neighborhood and I still live there. I could have moved to Lakewood Ranch or Palmetto, other communities, I still won't, we still own our house over there. So, it's a lot of history and tradition and I just want you to take a consideration. But we know our, our school board member will fight for us and we, we listen to her. She comes to all our stuff, but we have the time to get it right. And last thing, but last thing, I don't see a Southeast High School Community Day on that, on the form, so I don't know if they have stuff going on, but we want to be represented.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, Keenan.
Thank you.
Um, I will say, I mean, we can, I can probably answer that real quickly unless you want to, on the date, on why it wasn't at Southeast.
Right.
I believe it was prior time and it just wasn't in.
Right, and so what Mr. Wooton's referring to, for those who are listening, is that in our previous set of community meetings for rezoning earlier this year, at our five locations, one of which was Southeast High School, the whole one of the Seminoles, and it was not at Manatee High School, one of the locations. So, in this round, with these five meetings, we switched the Southeast High School location to Manatee High School as one of the five locations. No, we look again, we love Southeast and we love the Seminoles. We had, I think, only Mr. Wooton there, who, who represents the community very well. So, as we have our meeting now at Manatee High, but if anybody's interested from the Southeast High Community or that area of town, very historic area, like Keenan said, there is the public input button online, so I do encourage everybody to put in their public input, public comment on, on what options are best for that community so that we can make the best decision. And also, we'll be having along the way here, many more conversations with the board in this chambers in a workshop as we look to finalize these options. So, there's many more opportunities to keep this discussion going about some of the critical issues that Mr. Wooton raised this afternoon.
Alright, workshop items. Item number one, the Audit Committee Quarterly Update, and then we move the discussion regarding the Audit Committee Charter to the workshop as well for us to discuss. So, Mr. Daniel, come on down and love to hear about the Quarterly Update from the Audit Committee. You can stand, you can sit, whatever you want.
Is it alright if I sit, sit through your discussion?
Yeah, you can sit, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair members. It's very timely, I guess it's a very exciting time in the Audit Committee right now, everything that's going on. First thing I've got is that CRI, a firm we've been using for about 10 years, is our internal auditors finish up at the end of this month. And starting on page five in your agenda packet is the HR report they did. We've had some in the past that have had some significant findings, there were three findings in this one. The one that has a moderate impact is dealing with teaching out of field, keeping track of that, making sure we've done it. Found out that our Human Resources Department, their computer system doesn't have a field that says when their certificate out of field expires, it's a three-year term. So, we found there were teachers out of field still beyond that three-year mark. That's been corrected, they've apparently done some adjustments to the database, something they're looking for. But one of the things that's sort of a side effect of what we found is that when one of these teachers leaves and goes to another school, our group hasn't been telling them that they've been teaching out of field and they're in the second of their three years. So, we've, through the test, found some people that had gone to other districts, continued to teach out of field because there was no communication between districts as far as that temporary certificate and that out of field acknowledgement. The staff has made changes, they're looking at changing the procedures, it's not something that, you know, is going to cause a lot of grief, but yet still, people can come along and potentially get in trouble with the law if they're teaching and the teachers may not even realize what they're doing. So, that was the other thing. The other two were related, excuse me.
Yeah. Real quick, this probably isn't a question for you, Mr. Daniels, maybe Mr. Chapman or even Mr. Jensen, because it's kind of a technical, how, so like when I was in the Air Force, you had, every year you had to get a checkride and certified you're still good to fly, same as being an airline pilot. So, how, how is it that our system doesn't catch these things or flag, like, we didn't just set it up yesterday, I'm not trying to be difficult, I am just curious to know, like, how is it that we don't verify every year that everybody's teacher's certificate is valid or that it gets flagged or if they're, if they're on a temporary status, I don't know, I'm just curious, like, what's, where's the, where's the breakdown?
That's a great question, Mr. Tatum. I guess I'd need some clarification, are we speaking about the three-year temporary certificate or not?
Yes.
Or are we talking about out of field?
Out of field.
Because that, out of field is one year.
We understood they could do it for three years before they had the.
So, I think I would need some more time maybe to clarify exactly where the, the process concerns are, and then it sounds like HR is building plans, but yes, we do have some, we have processes in place, you approve an out of field report on every board agenda that HR runs to identify teachers who are out of field. They actually sign a paper, that's a certificate to earn, I believe, shows that like, yes, I recognize that I'm out of field and I need to attain this credential in order to continue teaching in this and meet the requirements for it. We obviously have our, you know, recertification process that happens, like, for example, I just renewed, I believe Dr. Breslin as well, just renewed our professional certificate, which we have to do every five years, meeting the points criteria, and HR manages that process and, you know, sent reminders and did all of those, those pieces. So, I guess I'd need to just dig a little deeper with HR and maybe some of the audit findings that were found to understand exactly where the concerns were so I could be able to better address them with you.
Okay, if you could, that'd be great, or, or just show us the remedy. I'm just actually surprised that the automation that we have doesn't just flag, you know, hey, your teacher's certificate is expiring or your, or your temporary certificate is expiring or something like that, or you're out of, but go ahead.
With the turmoil, with the ERP system implementation, there's probably some data fields that haven't been used appropriately in the past. They have corrected that, they have gone in and have, now your out of field report monthly is updated in real time now. They've already implemented these changes that would help you, I'm not saying you wouldn't want to follow up and all the others, but it triggered with them an awareness that they need to be more on top of the certification process across the board. This is the point we found, but the rest of them, every other five year, whether it be a three year, whatever the term is, it needs to be driven from here, not from the staff doing it. So, they've already made IT changes, certification specialists will initially audit the entire classes and then they'll be done on a timely quarterly basis as, as they go forward. That's already been implemented.
Okay.
But that was, again, the most serious of the items that we found.
And I would, just, one final point of kind of clarification of the question you just asked, I'd be happy to get you some more information about it. It's, it's an interesting process because there's like a state management component to teacher certification, but it's also very heavily locally controlled, be up between the school districts. So, like, when I apply for my recertification, I apply to the state, but then the state wants to know, like, who is my last employer or who's my current employer, they actually kick that application back to Manatee and then we do some processes here that then get returned to the state. So, it's actually kind of a decentralized system for, for teacher credentialing. I mean, DOE maintains the, kind of the record of the certificates, but as far as professional learning points and validating things and all that, that happens locally and can, the process can look different between different school districts. So, there's, there's kind of some local elements to it as well as some state elements, so I'd be happy to follow up.
There is no standardization across the board handed down from the state, so it is up to the locals to determine how they're going to handle that and.
So, it sounds, it sounds just typical government bureaucratic stuff. But one, one point that I will make is that, to some degree, I would suggest, let me put it that way, to the principals, that this is part of your responsibility to make sure that all the teachers in your school have the appropriate certificate and are current qualified. Like, if I'm a Flying Squadron Commander, it's my job to make sure that every aviator in my, in my squadron is current and qualified to do their job. And the answer of, well, the bureaucracy didn't flag it and, you know, your checkride expired or your flight orders were not renewed, or you didn't get your medical, whatever, none of that matters. Like, if I send out a pilot to go out and fly a mission and he or she is not current and qualified as a squadron commander, it's on me. So, that might be something, you know, maybe at the leadership conference, Mr. Chapman, to, like, look, yeah, we have all these bureaucratic processes, but this is, this is your squadron. Before you put a teacher in the classroom, you need to verify that they're current and qualified, as we would say in the, in the flight world, and if that means you got to go back and run a report or, you know, you should, I would think they would have a report, like, these are my out of qualified teachers and this is the, this is when it expires and all that.
The data fields necessary to trigger that were not adequately set up and complete, they have been corrected now.
Right.
The principal could have run a report a year ago and gotten a different answer than he would now, running the same report because of those data fields. I agree, they got to be responsible, but we got to make sure they have the tools to, to fulfill that responsibility.
Yeah.
And, and I'll say this too, I mean, teaching, you knew if you're out of field.
Well, that's.
You haven't passed the science and I'm teaching science, you know you're out of field and you know, the DOE did a really good job, I mean, I, this is now 10 years ago, but they did a good job of hounding you about, like, you don't have your credits or like, because remember, it's all great to be certified, but it's really, well, I don't want to say it's a money grab, but it's somewhat of a money grab because you're paying $75, $100, whatever it is, every five years to get your certificate back, that they're not even doing anything, it's locally that's maintaining your credit. I mean, but, we have a, we, I mean, as a teacher, you know, you have adequate communication about your certificate, but I agree with you that your principal should ultimately know what everyone's teaching, whether certified or not, absolutely, yeah.
And, and the answer of, well, the bureaucracy, the systems, like, you should know, if you're a principal, you should know, these are my out of field teachers and this is the date that it expires, whether or not the system showed me that or not, like, it's not like they have thousands of people, they have what, anywhere from 50 to 100, you know, teachers and, that's my point, is, you know, there's a lot of responsibility, being a principal, is making sure that your people are current and qualified is, would be one of them, regardless of what the bureaucratic process is. I'll just make that point, and something to maybe talk about at the leadership conference. Go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just two quick points, a great conversation. One of my colleagues at Leadership Florida this year was Dr. Josie McDaniel, who's our, who's the Bureau Chief for Certification at DOE. So, I've yet to make that connection with her and Craig Little and our team here, but that connection will be made because we now have an in, I guess, with the person who runs that office, which is an important office, because there was a backlog at one time of this, hopefully it's working a little better, but, and I just saw her last week at the Commissioner's Summit, but, and the other point is, we've also about to start a, an assessment of all of Human Resources. We're bringing in two seasoned professionals, one who used to be the CEO of HR for New York City Public Schools and another who is the CEO of Human Resources for Boston City Schools, and they now run a little consulting firm. And they're coming in to do a top-down, left and right study of our HR department, all the, we've got great professionals here behind all of our walls here doing great work in Human Resources, but I think it's been awhile since we've had somebody come in and look at it from an outside perspective of, are we doing all the things needed to make ourselves the best and most efficient HR system, whether it's certification, hiring, you know, you name it. So, we're about to do that, that, that will take a few months, but I'm excited because that blueprint, that improvement plan, if you will, again, great professionals working in HR, but it'll be a plan to kind of refresh and look at things a little differently, that blueprint will be ready for the next superintendent. So, essentially, that next superintendent will have a blueprint to start to work on how we can really, really improve our HR process. We also just recently hired a great seasoned professional, Dr. Christina Britton, who's our Executive Director of Human Resources, a long distinguished career, she's a former Assistant Superintendent in DeSoto County, former longtime principal and educator, she's now our head of our HR, doing a great job. Between her and that needs assessment, and obviously some of the work of the Audit Committee, I think we have a, a good blueprint that we can really improve all our processes and hand the next superintendent a really, really efficient, great working HR department, even better than what they're doing now.
And the last thing I'll say is it's on the teacher too, I agree with you, Mr. Chapman, but, you know, it's your job to make sure you're current and qualified to be in the classroom, just like when I, every time I got into a cockpit, there was no excuse if I wasn't current and qualified. Yeah, someone above me can take some responsibility, but it's my job, that's all. Thank you.
Second item is low risk, it was unemployment procedures and documentation. We use a vendor to handle the unemployment claims that are against the district, it's a company that knows it. As that relationship has developed, the communication process consisted of, a lot of times, keeping that communication in email form and never formalizing any type of a file structure or a system so that it was accessible to everybody in the department that might need to get to it. So, what has been recommended and what they're doing is developing written procedures for those unemployment claims, how they are to be handled and how you'd communicate, and then forming a central file in the server that all the communication with that vendor will be placed on there, so anyone that needs to have it will know they've got it all, it's complete, they're not missing something, it's in an email somewhere else or scattered communication. That also has already been implemented, so. And the third item we have is something that we run across quite frequently anytime we have a computerized system, and that it's access to the VERSA system of the State of Florida's Department of Education. That's the verification and everything else. We looked at six users, one was no longer in a position requiring access, one user was no longer unemployed, was no longer employed by the district, so they were immediately terminated. And the recommendation we have is that periodically we look at who's on those access lists, anytime we have significant or even maybe on a timely basis with staff turnover in these positions that have access. I'm, I'm sure if we look at other elements around the entire district and access, there's probably some of that same thing, because every time we look at something, in my experience, whether it's here or anywhere else, there's always somebody that left that hadn't been taken off. And just, we just need to be more diligent and look at that. Again, Assistant Director is checking the monthly for membership and accuracy now, has a specialist looking at that. Again, it was just something that kind of grows and you got to finally put something in place to keep checking. I'm sure there's, again, there's other accesses that we have to state and federal databases. Chapman, you may want to have a look.
Good.
Yeah.
As that goes, but those are the only things we found at HR and we're recommending approval of the report, that'll be the last report we'll get from CRI. We're not open for any questions?
Yeah, Ms. Frey has one.
It may not be specifically to you, Mr. Daniels, by the way, congratulations, we just put you back on his chair.
I thought I was going to get away.
You're not going to get away from that, so wanted to say that and thank you again for the work you've done and the work you're going to do.
Thank you.
The VERSA system, can somebody tell me who, who takes people off of that system? I mean, we just, every month, or every month, we go through, or twice, who resign, terminated, whatever, who takes them off?
Well, I don't know the exact person, but that, that team is led by Dr. Britton and Human Resources.
Okay.
Yeah, Ms. Frey, in the, in the report itself, just to answer you real quick, it says, the specialist, this is our management response, the specialist will check VERSA access monthly for membership and accuracy, excuse me, there are five accesses permitted by the Department of Education. So, management response says the HR specialist is responsible for that and then their supervisor is responsible for oversight of that employee checking.
Right, okay.
And again, that's already been implemented.
Okay, but prior to this new HR, right, that's alright, that's okay. So, according to this audit, it was.
We found two that should have been not, should not have been on the access list.
Do you know how long they were on accesses?
I'd have to go back and look at the detail of the work.
That's alright, I'm just, was just curious.
I'd have to look at their termination dates to when we found and I just, I don't have that with me.
Okay, so that might, and I understand HR puts that in, I guess, the HR director, according to Mr.
I'm sure they could get that data for you, but I almost, it almost doesn't matter, I mean, we.
Right, it does.
We found it and we're looking forward and.
Right.
Processes in place and, again, it's, it's very common in my experience in any computerized system, the first thing we go in and we do an internal look is who's got access. And if you look at hacking, that's one of the premier ways that it happens, is that access is not cut off to somebody. They may not do it, but somebody finds out their codes and then you're in trouble, so. I ask people, I tell people, IT people, it's not whether or not you're paranoid, it's whether you're paranoid enough.
Right, okay, good analogy, so, okay.
Mr. Taylor? I'm sorry, Ms. Frey, were you done?
Yes.
So, again, my background is military, so I just use that because that's like this huge bureaucracy.
I get it.
Bigger than we can even imagine, so, but I will say that when I, when you're out processed from the military, there's like a checklist of all these things that you should be doing, and it goes to different departments, and it says, you know, security clearance, what do you got to do with that, finance system, what do you got to do with that? And I don't know if we have something like that, maybe, if we don't, I know that when, because I, there was about a week, there was about 12 days when I wasn't on the board, so I, between, there was a time there anyway, long story, but the point is, I don't remember actually getting like, like an out-processing checklist that said, do this, do this, do this, do this, do this, do this. Ms. Cox was very good about kind of helping me, walking me through that process, but maybe there is, I'm just saying though, that, that kind of thing, if it was really done well, would, would catch that and say, remove this person's access to whatever systems they have access to, right, and that. And then that, that out-processing checklist goes in a file and then you can go back and see like, who was responsible and why didn't it get done, but it's, because there's so, because the bureaucracy is so big, there's so many things to do when someone out-processes from a big bureaucracy, then unless it is all on a checklist somewhere, someone's going to forget something.
Yes.
You know, an email that says, hey, remove Jane from the VERSA system, yeah, I'll do that, and then it doesn't get done because there are 500 more emails that came in after that. Anyway, that's the point.
And maybe that's something that, when that team comes in from HR, maybe that's something they see, like, hey, we need this, yeah?
Yeah, and I've been blessed to still work here, so I haven't gone through that process, but I, but I will, I will ask, I think it's a great point, Mr. Tatum, and I will ask, what is, or I just wrote it down and I'll make sure, I, I know, I, I just don't want to presume, right? So, I want to make sure that, that's, it's a great question, so I will run that down and follow back.
Okay, great, thanks.
So, onboarding and outgoing checklist?
Yeah, same thing.
Be nice.
I don't see any other board members lit up.
The next item is just to note that RSM is taking over as the internal auditor the first of the month. The first thing they're going to be coming in and doing is a very detailed, very in-depth risk assessment that we are required to do at least once every five years. We held off until we had gone through the contract process and even with the redistricting and everything else that's going to be going on. and everything else that's gonna be going on, new superintendent, they're gonna be having to have time and spend time, and part of it is gonna be them learning who's who, so it's gonna be, I don't want to say painful, but they're not gonna be real happy. But it's something we are required to do. This also sets a baseline for us as a committee to evaluate that risk assessment and then come up with recommendations to you, this is what we need to look at, this is what we may have, something we gotta dig into. They seem to be very good, very competent, they're locally, they live here, the ones that'll be working here, so we're pretty excited about that. Third item is to note the charter school financials. You've been getting them on a monthly basis. We, over two meetings, went through all of them, just walking through them, the reporting, the numbers they had. We found there is some variances. Charter schools as part of the school district are required to be reported under the yellow book, which is out of the federal grant system. It has certain ways, things are handled that are different than commercial or a private school. We found that some of the schools, and I don't remember which ones, have, it didn't look like they were using the yellow book standards.
Right.
The reports are not quite what they should be, some of the reports they have in there don't include like governmental funds you're required to have. Just, unfortunately, we had a long discussion about, well, what do you as a board have any authority to go in there and really do anything? And the answer is pretty much no. We forwarded comments to the Department of Education, who is responsible for looking at them and determining whether or not they meet the requirements that are there. It's something that I've also talked to a few legislators about, that, you know, we're gonna have the charter schools as a local level, we ought to have some ability to oversee at least their reporting, that they're complying with standards that are best management practices, if nothing else. And I know your frustration with the lack of ability to say or do anything. I also was involved with the collapse of one of them and working with the district and getting that sorted out, so I know how important it is to get it right in the first place, and so commend you. And the fourth item I have is the Audit Committee itself. We had four members out of seven, which constituted a quorum. With the resignation of Ms. Foreman, we don't have a quorum anymore. And I know there's language in the upcoming charter that you're gonna look at to address that. As Ms. Frey so kindly referred to, I've been railroaded again. But am stepping in at least for a while to see if we can get things going and staying on as the chair. You know, it's never good to lose somebody like that, but it's just the way it goes. Life is not always full of cherries. And, you know, you guys had to do what you had to do, we'll make it happen.
Thank you for your report. And that fourth item is, you know, what you're talking about, the concern and, and not having a quorum, and obviously the charter is up next. This is originally supposed to be during our meeting, but I asked, and thanks for pushing it back to...
Of course.
To push it back to, to this discussion. I figured it's probably better that we do this with, here in this setting and knowing that the update was gonna happen. And then, you know, depending on what board, whatever we decide we want to do potentially, you know, we can put on, on the next meeting to actually approve it. So I'll give it to you, Mr. Kennedy, to... And Mr. Daniel, you can definitely sit right there if you want to, as, as we're talking about this, because there may be questions directly to you. If you want to say I'm out, you're def, you definitely can do that, too.
No, no, I'll be glad to help you any way I can.
Yeah, so if you want to stay there, because there may be questions from board about the function of the committee, but, Mr. Kennedy, I want to give it to you, I know you're the liaison to the Audit Committee, you've taken a stab at this before.
This is stab number two.
It's stab number two. And so, yeah, I'll go ahead and give it to you, I like what you got here, but I'll go ahead and give it to you and see where it goes.
All right, thanks. No, I appreciate it. So, board members, the, the print, the printed copy you have in front of you, thank you Laura for making sure everybody had a copy. The items, the edits that you see in the green text, those are, you've already seen those edits, the last time we, we took a stab at this, stab number one. So, so green is all old information, and then anything in purple, which is mostly, or I'm sorry, in red, thank you Laura, which is mostly in red, is new, the meat of which is on page five, which is the One Mil Oversight Subcommittee. One of the ideas that came out of our last discussion was, let's roll the function of the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee into the Audit Committee, and so that's what I've done there on page four. Like I said, above that, the mission above that, you've seen that already. And then, on page five, there is a suggestion from Mrs. Foreman, which I noted there. The last time the Audit Committee took a look at this draft, that was a suggestion of Mrs. Foreman's, so I included that one there. But let me, that's kind of the overview, let me go back to the, let me go back to page one and just focus on some relevant, relevant points. Underneath composition of committee, in the two-four-sixth line down, the committee will consist of three to seven members. That will, that was the quorum reference made by Mr. Daniel. So that, the, the committee currently has three members.
Yes.
As we stand today, so we will be in compliance with our charter. On the next page, under administrative, Mr. Tatum, this was a request of yours, and it's in the second paragraph, there's actually, you'll see on the fourth line, once, third line, once approved, now to the fourth line, the Chair of the Audit Committee, and then you'll see there's some type there, there's some text there in purple. That should actually be red. And now that I'm looking at this on the page, I see what Laura meant. Laura, I talked to Laura yesterday, and she's like, I can't really tell the difference between purple and black, and now that I'm looking at it on a piece of paper, I see what you mean. No, that's okay, that's okay, I appreciate the work you did. So, Mr. Tatum, you had asked me to come up with some language that was relevant to what we're actually doing and not that board, staff, internal audit position that never really worked out for us after two tries. So I have struck through all that, those pieces, and just said, once approved, the Chair of the Audit Committee shall communicate that request in writing to the School Board Member Liaison to the Committee. So that cleaned that up. Like I said, everything, I would just suggest maybe just take a quick read through the Oversight Committee language. I did notice a couple typos in there, which I'll fix, but, but the, I think the only...
Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah.
I want to point out, you also have a purple on the first page.
Yeah.
Under Audit Committee Members or Volunteers, et cetera, and it says, committee members must be residents in school district financial operation, or pardon me, of Manti County and a CPA, or have significant employment experience. That, that was the addition there.
Thank you, yes. See, I missed the purple right there. That one, I forget who that suggestion came from.
It came from...
Or maybe I just kind of reworded that.
But we had some discussion in the committee regarding...
That's where it came from, thanks.
Who would be able to be on the committee if they weren't a CPA? Or maybe even they weren't an accountant. I'll go back to Dr. Agusso, who had been a past superintendent, was very intimately familiar with School Board Financial Operations, and she was even the Chair of the Committee, a very outstanding member. And when we looked at that, we saw that it just said, experience, and several of the members felt that they needed to have been employed, been on staff, and some, I personally say, you know, if you got somebody that's done volunteer work and understands it, but the committee did ask that Mr. Kennedy make it be related to having employment experience within the district, just as Dr. Agusso did.
Okay, if I may, can...
Yeah, you can start.
Okay. I think part of that stemmed from, I think that should say, significant employment or other, I think it's, I think it's very vague. And I'm gonna go to Ms. Johnson, who served on the CFOP. She was part of the new audit firm committee to select the audit, and she had significant financial background, but it was a question, could she do that Audit Committee? I know we did it all of that, but she didn't, she's not a CPA, but she's, just doesn't have that certificate, but she's been in the finance world for a long time.
She was specifically one of the things that was driving this conversation.
Right, exactly. So I don't know if that line should say, have significant employment, I mean, it just says, be a CPA or active or retired, or have significant employment experience. I don't think it needs to say, in school district financial operations.
Or, well, or you could say, or have significant employment experience in financial operations.
Yes, that would be my recommendation for that, because in any financial world, as you know, there's different buckets. You can only pull from one bucket to the other if it allows you to. So, so I would recommend that one modification there.
Can I dialogue back at that?
Sure.
Okay. I love this.
It's a dialogue.
I'd like to dialogue.
Yep.
Ms. Frey, let me take you over to page four, because I just want to...
Yeah, I was gonna ask about that, too.
I wanted to point, the, the point that you're making is covered in paragraph two.
Right.
Just have to go find it.
Can I ask why we went, we went from the CFOP to the Omos? Or is that a different?
It was, it was just, no, it was, I mean, I just kind of created on the fly. It was just to be very specific about what this committee does. Like Citizens Financial Oversight Committee, like, what are they overseeing? Like, we know what, we know what they're overseeing.
Okay.
This was just to be very specific, because within this charter is also oversight of the half-cent sales tax. So there's kind of, there's the Audit Committee's mission, and then there's these two, for lack of a better term, sub-missions.
Right.
That are, that are covered here. So, I mean, I'm not married to the name, it was just something to come up with when I was writing the draft.
Okay.
But, but at the top of paragraph two, under One Mil Oversight Subcommittee, the, the third line, members are not required...
Right.
There should be a to have. Not required to have CPA or education, educational finance experience required of full Audit Committee members.
Okay.
So...
That, on a Subcommittee, yeah, that's great. I would...
I mean, I, I hear your point about the overall committee, but I did want to just be clear, because that was one of the things we talked about a couple times, is that, you know, members of the One Mil Committee don't necessarily need to be a CPA or so forth. So that's it for me.
Okay.
Thank you for the dialogue.
Thank you, you're very welcome. Okay. So, that would be one of my things, would be the One Mil Oversight Subcommittee. I don't know if we can...
We can call it whatever the board wants to call it.
We've had CFOP for so long, I think that it's gonna confuse a lot of people, but, yeah.
I think if we do change, I think changing is good. I guess it really doesn't matter.
I would like to get feedback from the Chair of that Committee, to be honest, I would. I mean, you have the ability to talk to that Chair.
Sure.
And see what her feedback is.
Illegal input on, perhaps.
Okay, yeah.
On the name, what thought I had is that the millage could get renewed in the future and not be one mil. You know, it could be more or less, right?
Oh, okay.
So maybe it should be additional millage or something like that.
Okay, or like, ad valorem Oversight Committee?
We refer to it when we do the budget, we call it one voted millage.
One.
Oh, sorry, not one, we call it voted millage. We don't have the...
Don't actually have a number in there.
We don't have the number one, so it's called voted millage.
It's not limited to just one, it's just, that's how it got passed.
Okay, that's a good point. Okay, so...
So you might want to...
Voted millage.
Additional voted millage, maybe AD...
Oversight Committee.
The, the Vimos.
Additional voted millage is what we've actually referred to it in the past as.
Okay.
About the finance.
Vimos.
The Vimos.
The Vimos.
Okay. I will talk to the Chair, just to get her input, too.
Yeah, yeah, I would like to give her that courtesy, she's been on this, yeah.
No doubt.
Just had a birthday, too.
Taylor?
Just on page one, I wanted to agree with Ms. Frey that, about who's qualified, someone that has, I would just say, even financial, significant financial or business operations. I mean, who knows, the retired CEO of Delta Airlines could be living in this area, you know. And I just, my, my concern is since we're already having trouble getting people on this committee.
Right.
By limiting it to people in school district financial operations, and I hear your concern, and maybe the people, that would be the ideal person to be on the committee, but we're already having problems.
I'm with you, sir.
So I would just, you know, and then we can decide, does this person have quota, that's part of our judgment, have this, have significant business or financial experience? So, I would just say, or have significant business and, or financial experience, something to that effect, and that way it widens the pool that's available to us, and we can decide if that person has the experience that we want, rather than, because we're, we're already having problems finding people. That was my input on that. Thank you.
Those are good points.
No, I was just gonna say, if, if you cross off school district out of that section you're looking at.
Yep.
That, you want to, you want to go beyond, so cross that off.
Cross, I mean, maybe just the word business, because someone might say, well, you know, you didn't, you weren't the CFO of Delta Airlines, you were just the, the CEO or the COO, but people that have worked in those jobs have a lot of experience in that world of managing budgets. Like even, I guess, well, since I'm a School Board Member, but I mean, even I had experience in the Air Force of managing budgets and, you know, working in that world of planning, budgeting, and executing, and it would just open up the aperture if we put business or financial operations in there. The word business...
And like you say, and then we, we get to say yes or no to that person.
That's right, we get to say yes or no to that person.
Yeah, maybe COO of Delta is not as good.
Business or financial.
We want the united guy.
Yeah. You never know, or some retired general officer who was, you know, the, the Chief Finance Officer of the Army, or you never know.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
I think limiting it is, is gonna, is gonna hurt us.
That's, that's the only thing I had.
So it was, or have significant business experience.
Do you have...
And financial operations.
So...
In business or...
Or financial.
Or, okay, business or, all right.
Or financial operations.
All right.
So I'm just gonna, a couple things. Obviously, we know we have to have an Audit Selection Committee. Mr. Di, question on like, the, I know with the, with the CFOP, we said we were gonna have a Citizen Financial Oversight Committee, basically, right? Independent Citizen Committee. What if no one volunteers? And the reality is, we're down to one, really, on the CFOP, two, I guess.
Two.
But one's, kids don't even come, we're down to two, and one's probably hanging on, has been apart for a long time, and is probably being, she's probably doing it because she really cares, but she also doesn't want to like walk away and then there'll only be one person. So I guess my question is, what happens if we don't have anybody volunteer for these, for that? Like, what would we have to do as a board to fulfill our obligation that we said we were gonna have this to the voters, but it's not fulfilled? What, what, what do we do?
Well...
I know that's a huge hypothetical, but the reality is, we only have two right now.
That's a good question. Like, the Citizens Committee came about, the Review Committee, based on a, you know, a voluntary tax. I'm not sure, it's almost like finding new bus drivers. The, you had to raise the wage, right?
Sure.
Now you've got them, it sounds like, hopefully. But I mean, I'm not sure it has to be voluntary, I mean, if you, you could come up with a stipend or something and see if that drew interest, I'm, I'm not sure the, I have to look at the charter if it says that it is voluntary, but you might have to, you might have to stretch to get members.
Sure.
And, and maybe even offer some kind of compensation.
I mean, the sales tax, obviously the sales tax was always in, in with the Audit Committee anyway, but I'm just, that's just part of what I'm about to brainstorm here in a second. So, I mean, just what do we do, right? Like, I, I don't, I, I would say, and this may be something you're about to say, I would almost, if we've got two in the CFOP and three now, right, in the Audit, like, it may have to be that, like, they're all one, like, yes, we have a Subcommittee for it, but... Like, yes, we have a subcommittee for it, but everybody's in that subcommittee if you're on the audit committee. Because, because my point is, if the two in the CFoc leave, and, and we have a subcommittee like this underneath the audit committee, and there's nobody in the subcommittee, the audit committee people are gonna have to be that subcommittee people, right? So, I, so I, I'm not saying this is something we gotta, like, cross that bridge now, because we have two people in there, but I'm just saying, if we don't wanna come back to this charter yet again, you know, a year from now, or six months from now, or whatever, or whenever something changes, I just, that's just an idea to throw out there. How do we fix that?
I, I've thought about this, actually, the, if you go back to when the citizen committees were, came about, you know, and one of them, this one, in fact, came about, I think, out of the financial crisis, right? Of the 2010 era or whatever.
Twelve, yeah, 2012.
Twelve, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and then things start, I think, two things are going on. Things, things get managed properly, and there's less concern in the community. But I think also, there's a, there's a phenomenon just going on in society of, of lack of volunteerism.
Mm-hmm.
And so you gotta be mindful of that as a board, when you, when you just, you can't just assume, we're gonna create a committee to do this or that. It's getting difficult.
Sure.
Not just at this level, but in all levels of getting volunteers. But, you know, th, this is baked right into the tax, so you really can't, I, I wouldn't recommend ignoring it, but you might have to go to some kinda measures to try to get interest in people moving on it.
Um, but inside, I mean, I guess the words independent citizens oversight committee.
If I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, as I understand it, we on the audit committee have to be independent of you.
Right.
As part of our requirement, those to be in there. We've had discussions about just having one committee and having some non-CPA members coming off the CFoc onto that committee. One of the issues is, a lot of them don't know audit procedures. We have to do some training, we'd have to do that. But, you know, anytime I get a new staff member, I had to invest...
Sure.
At least six months in them before I could let them go do their work.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, going down the road, having a blend of professionals and citizen members on that audit committee itself may be the way to go, to comply with the requirements of both standards, the requirements of the...
Yeah.
Sales tax, because you're gonna be trying to use a professional firm, go do the work, they are independent. Uh, I also personally feel that having some citizen input on the audit committee might be good for us. Just a different perspective, a different look, uh, a different perception. We, well, this is okay, but they're gonna give us more of what the public perception to this might be. And, you know, maybe something to consider is, is not have a subcommittee, have them be part, have two, two members, and I would keep it so that the professionals always had...
The majority.
The majority.
Sure.
But I would think that you're gonna work with them, you're just gonna work with them a couple of weeks and then send them on their way, and, and, no, let's make, let's keep them involved.
Yeah.
If, down the road, we needed to break it out, if we've got some people that have been experienced using a firm and, and doing it in a professional manner, it may make it easier, even if they're separated down the road.
Right, yeah.
Both, both charters say volunteers.
Okay, okay. So, strike time.
Strike.
Right.
I, I will say, oh, you have something for that? I, I have another grand, but yeah, go ahead.
Um, I was just thinking that when we, we put out that we need volunteers for this, where are we putting it out to? Are we advertising? Are we sending notices to local CPA firms? Are we maybe tapping some of our recent retirees who might be interested in still being invested in the school district, but don't want a full-time job? I would like to volunteer Mike Barber, but he probably doesn't wanna do that. Um, but we've got some really great people who worked for the district who may be interested in staying in a limited capacity, being involved.
I know we, I know I've seen on our website, I know I've seen on social media, um, like on Facebook and stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then it's also word of mouth, amount from us recruiting people to in it. But as far as like, uh, you know, maybe, I think we'd give them to SAC, right? Mr. Chapman, I think we tell SAC, we're looking for this, so those are your, your involved parents. I thought we were giving it to SAC.
Mr. Chapman, have we been giving this to SACs?
Well, we, we add it to, when we meet with parent, with SAC chairs and, and parents.
Tell them we're looking.
We do, you know? I mean, could we do more in the, in the financial areas? Sure, you know, uh, you know, I don't have, I would need a little help there to, to reach into that world, but, uh, you know, but I lean, you know, whatever the board wants us to do, we'll, we'll do.
Well, also, we, we, on a regular basis, go to chamber events. Have we put it out through their, you know, their newsletters?
There we go.
Things like that, because then, these are people who already invest in the community. These are people who, they come to these events, they want to be involved in the community. This would give them an opportunity to be involved in our school system without, again, having to take on a full-time, a job of some kind.
Sure. So, um, yeah, no, great thoughts. Um, I mean, look, we know we've gotta have one of them, uh, we, we've gotta have a citizens financial oversight committee, period, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then we've also, we gotta have the, the auditor selection committee when the time comes to pick an auditor. Um, sometimes, and, and, and Mr. Di brought this up, I, I think sometimes, um, and especially in our community, listen, people come out in droves when there needs to be significant help being happen, you know, happened. We, we were in a financial crisis, I was teaching at the time, um, people came in droves saying, we need to help, um, and we need to have an audit committee that's helping the board with the firm that they selected, et cetera. I think at some point, you get to, to, and I think we're here, really, I think we really are with the CFoc more than the audit committee, but here we are in the charter, making it from like five to three, four to three. Who knows, maybe next year, we gotta make this down to two, because nobody's on the, the committee anymore, right? And so, I, I just, I'm, I'm, I, I, I'm not, um, I just don't know, when you start limiting it to one or two people sitting around a table, looking at whether it's the one mil oversight or an audit, working with RSM as an audit, like, we're down to two or three people that are now making decisions for stout, I mean, for us, we have a bigger financial staff that... You, you, we just, I don't wanna get to a point, and I think we're really close to it already, that we have a very small, minute amount of people making decisions for a larger group, you know, two people on the CFoc? I, I mean, that's not a committee anymore.
Mr. Chair.
That's two people.
Yeah.
The, the audit committee is no longer committee, that's three people. And, and so, I think that, that, I think there was a time we really needed the audit committee to get us back on track, and they've done a heck of a job to get us back on track. Um, but I just don't know, um, if, if we were paying hundreds of thousands dollars to be audited by a firm, we get audited in one subject every three years by the state. I just don't, I, I, I hate to sit here and ask two people to sit here and go through this, and it's like, for, for, for what? I mean, now, they, you came with great ideas, and the HR stuff is huge, right? And a bureaucracy like we have, we know there's gonna be issues. But I just, I, I, at some point, it's no longer a committee, and it's one person or two people making decisions and, and having, and giving suggestions to us as a board, and it's just one person or two people.
I'm trying to, if I could...
I would definitely dialogue, once I'm off my soapbox.
Get off. How tall is it?
But, very short, because I'm about done. But you know what I mean? I mean, I, 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 at some point, when the CFoc started, it was like twenty people, right? Like eighteen?
Eighteen.
Twenty-one. That's awesome, like, that's a, that's a group...
Twenty-one.
That's a group of people, it's the same thing, if you're at a SAC committee inside of an elementary school or middle school, and it's one mom and dad running the whole show instead of twenty, right? Like, we gotta get to the point, like, I, and I'm not saying we, we, we end all this, we have to have it, the, the, especially the one mil. I just, again, I, I just, I think we've gotta look at this from a level of like, this is only one or two people now per thing. So either we're gonna ramp up our, our recruitment, or maybe it's time we say goodbye to some of this, because we just don't have the, the, the want to do it, by the, by the, now, one, we, we have to do the ones that we have to do.
Right.
Now we can dialogue.
Are, are you ready for me? Okay. I think that if we choose to blend, I'm gonna use the word blend, because there's two functions. The audit committee's looking at processes and other things that the CFoc really, that's not their wheelhouse. So I'm thinking, in my opinion, Mr. Kennedy, you listen.
I'm ready to dialogue, anytime.
All right. That we actually blend these two committees, we're fulfilling, Mr. Di can chime in on the legal side, we're fulfilling the charter obligations. However, when they're, the audit committee is meeting on specific things that you covered today on your annual report, you don't need the members of the CFoc there for that process. But the CFoc could certainly use the audit committee members with the millage side. So I would say, kind of balance it that way. I don't think the two members we have left on the CFoc necessarily needs to attend a four or five-hour audit meeting. They could come in at the point where we get into the finance, I don't know how long you meet, I've, I've been...
Four hours.
Yeah.
Okay.
Two, three at the most?
Two, three at the most, okay. Well, there you go.
It could run out.
So I would suggest that, that would be a recommendation, that we could blend the two committees. We can, I'll dialogue with the chair of that committee and see what her opinion is, but I'm dialoguing with you as a liaison to the audit committee, would you think that that would be a good...
I think that's what you're suggesting here.
I think it's a great...
I was going the same way, and...
Right.
I can, let's just scrap this entire one mil oversight committee, subcommittee section.
Oh, you worked so hard on it.
We, it's okay, it's, it's fine.
We could copy and paste.
This is the, the way the sausage making works.
Yep.
Um, so I can, I can take, we can scrap that whole section, I can take the edits you all just gave me today, um, we can make one audit committee of five members. So we still have a true committee, and really, what the committee is gonna be doing is they're really, I mean, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, you guys are, you guys are overseeing our auditors and our audit work, and then presenting recommendations to the board on the work that the auditors did. So the committee's not doing any auditing, auditing work themselves.
Oh, no, of course not.
Right, as it says in the charter. So, um, um, I, I think this is actually a really good idea, because if we do, um, we've got, now we've got a five-member committee, and those two are gonna have to sit through the whole meeting.
Okay.
I thought we were talking about blending them together from the jump, like, from this, 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 your new charter was talking about blending them, right? I thought so. That's the way I read it.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, like, take out, same, I did, just take out the subcommittee idea.
Gotcha.
And our, our two members of our current CFoc just become, that we will, we will approve the board, I hope, we'll approve them to join the audit committee, because we do have subjectivity, um, in who we can appoint, especially with the, the edits you guys just gave me. Committee, this is the audit committee, audit committee members must be residents of Manatee County, NBA CPA, active or retired, or have significant employment experience in business or financial operations. So by that definition, we can get both CFoc members onto the audit committee, um, and we go from there, and we're, and we're compliant.
I would, I would only offer one thing.
Go ahead.
If we're gonna bring them onto the audit committee, we need to make sure it's not structured so they feel like they're second-class citizens.
They would come on as full voting members.
Well, okay, but we've...
Full voting, but...
They would not be there except during CFoc.
I agree, and that's what I was saying to Mrs. Spray, like, they have to be there for the whole meeting.
Maybe I didn't understand, Mr. Kenny, but I wanna make sure if they come on, they are full members, they have the voting rights, they have the discussion rights.
I mean, you could pretend, oh, go ahead.
I don't know if it, this needs to be audit CFoc. I think, because we do have two different committees, blending them is, you know, to meet at one time is one thing, but I still think that we need to maintain CFoc somewhere in this, uh, charter.
Okay, I forgot everything I just said.
I'm sorry. No, 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 I'm just saying, it needs to be defined that...
Miss, Miss Felton had something.
It will be one of their functions, which is already in there in green, sorry.
Right.
Which is the mission, one mil referendum.
Right, okay, all right.
It's defined.
All right.
Miss Felton.
Okay, um, I'm really good at being patient. Um, I, I don't, not gonna weigh in here or there as to blending or not blending, I, you both know your committees, you know your committees, you know the people on there and what they are capable and not capable of doing. So I'm gonna stay out of that part of it, but I still think we need to get more buy-in from the community. Um, so whatever we do, um, if, you know, if somebody on the current CFoc decides they don't wanna do it anymore, now we've got a committee of four. We still need more buy-in, we need to bring more people into it, regardless of how the breakdown of what the committees look like at the end of the day. Um, so wherever we proceed with this, I wanna see that we do work on launching some sort of an advertisement program where we can hit those, those community members who have a vested interest in our town.
I agree with you, if we're gonna do something, we've got it, we have to do, and I think, Mr. Chapman, that's what you were about to mention, but before I, before we go into like, what kind of campaign we can do, I wanna make sure we understand what we're removing with this, if we do blend it. You're now asking people to be a part of a committee that's not just, oh, the one mil CFoc, or hey, come use your auditing skill, like, it's now combined.
Mm-hmm.
We already have a hard enough time finding some, I just, I don't, I, I don't know, I, I'm just, at the end of the day, um, sometimes you just don't need things, and I'm not, I think what Mr. Daniel does that I can't do, it's amazing, but I just, my problem is, we're gonna ask, we're, we're, we're asking now a two-person, three-person, add two more, that don't really know the auditing skills and those types of things, we're still left with three people making decisions. Like, at the end of the day, at the end of the day, the audit committee was created to give the board a buffer to a, an area that the board had failed to oversight, the superintendent at the time, and the financial, because of their acumen, wasn't good enough to do that. So they brought in an audit committee to, to do that. My, my question is, we don't have any type of committee like this for anything else. We don't have a construction committee that meets with our construction people that, and our, and our CMs, and then come back to us, come back to us and say, hey, well, they're saying fifty-five million for a school, it really should be, we don't have an education committee that meets and then comes back and reports back to us, you know what I mean? I, and I'm, and I'm, I, I think the audit committee has completely turned from where we were in 2012, I think the audit committee was a huge reason why this district is the where it is financially. So I'm not trying to take anything away, so please, try not to try to take anything away from the audit committee, because I was here as a teacher, and there was times we didn't even think we were gonna get paid, like, that's how brutal this thing, this place was, right? And, and the audit committee absolutely, and the, and, and Mr. Christopher and all that crew, they got together and changed, but I, but we're not in a crisis mode, and I just, I just, sometimes things run their course. And, and I feel bad asking, you know, Mr. Daniel will come up here and give us these quarterly reports, and it's him by himself, two people, and now one doesn't show, they're sick, they don't come, you got two people sitting around, I just, I mean, we might as well hire you as a part-time, I mean, I'm being, and I'm just being, if we really want to, I'm being just, like, what do we do? Like, we're asking volunteers to one person?
Can I dialogue with you?
Absolutely, please.
I completely agree with you.
Please.
I would, I would do away with it all, I think it's...
I think so.
A bureaucracy is not necessary, but my understanding is that we have, don't we have, legally have to have an audit?
No, only selection committee.
Okay, so we change and call it an audit selection committee, then?
And they come together only when we, as a board, are running away from, when RSM's contract goes away.
Uh-huh.
What do we have, RSM for three months, uh, three months, three years?
Yep.
So it's a three-year contract. So towards the end of that three-year contract, we call, uh, Mr. Daniel, I'm saying, hey, the audit selection committee, we are looking to, to go, you know, to do an RFQ or RFP, and can you get the audit selection committee together to help us pick an auditor?
Yes, so let's do that.
They come together, they say, hey, let's do, use R S M again. R S M's our person, they come and present to us what they do quarterly, right? Like, that's what we're paying them 300-some-a-thousand dollars for. I just feel like if we're gonna, again, we only have one per, two people, three people in these committees, like, we might as well bring them, I mean, and use them and actually use them, use them rather than, you know.
So, so this audit selection committee, is that what it's called legally required?
Only has to meet when we pick a new auditor.
Can we hire them or do they have to be volunt, you know? Why would, you know, Mr. Daniel?
Right now, they're, they're set up to be volunteers.
Yep, it has to be a volunteer.
It has to be volunteers?
Well, the chair is the board liaison, the rest of them are the audit committee or other designees like you did from CFoc. But they have, the idea is to be outside.
This is the last pa, this is all right out of statute.
The last page?
Yeah.
And, and you, look, we know we have to have a CFoc.
Yep.
We have to have one of those. So, so the reality is, we have to have a citizens' financial oversight committee.
You also have ballot language that requires an audit committee for your sales tax.
Correct, right, so they're both the same thing, that they would, that committee, citizens' financial oversight committee would serve for the sales tax and for the, and for the millage.
Right.
I would ask that our audit team, our audit committee members be on that.
Be on the CFoc and.
I would absolutely ask Mr. Daniel and everybody to be on that and be a part of our sales tax and our, and our village. But that there is no audit committee anymore, that, that those folks are, are going to help to make sure that R S M is doing what they're supposed to be doing with the sales tax and with, with, with what's called. That doesn't mean that any, well, I would hope, I'd hope this maybe, but I don't know, depends if Mr. Daniel would want to or not. That doesn't mean that we, as a board, can't say, you know what? I don't get the language that R S M is talking about. Can we find a liaison for the board and ask somebody in the community, like Mr. Daniel, to come in and be our liaison directly to us? It doesn't have to be committee, and that way, we know it's one person. And I don't know if we pay them, I don't know if it's volunteer, I don't really care about that necessarily. But I just, I feel like we have this, these functions of groups and I just don't know if it's truly, truly needed. Obviously, we have to do our statutory regulations, we have to do that.
I would be fine with the audit committee coming over.
But if there was just a citizens' financial oversight committee, that, that, that committee is looking for our sales tax and our millage. Obviously, R S M is doing the, the work of it, right? They're gonna be doing the report, but, but there is no true audit committee, it's those. And when we do need the audit selection committee, we call them up. Or if we feel like this is not working and in six months from now, we're like, hey, as a board, we would like to hire someone part-time to help. I mean, that's what you're doing, Mr. Daniel, you're working part-time for us for nothing. It's, it's kinda crazy. Like, why don't we just say, hey, let's have someone that can speak the auditor's language, that can go back and speak to us and, and it be, you know, a relationship like that and still be separated because we're hiring them. This is our committees, we're hire, we would hire somebody. So, I don't know, I mean, I know I've completely blown this up and I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay.
Uh, but this is.
That's what we're here for.
Talk about, talk about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I was wondering if Ms. Sellers or Mr. Daniels, if either of you have any thoughts to weigh in on this?
Love to hear it.
How, yeah, please, please, in terms of how you think this, this idea would work of the, the two oversights working together as a committee and how that would function with your teams.
We, we started off back in 12, it was a mess. My wife was also one who was wondering whether she was gonna get paid and there was a lot of mistakes. We had a lot of turmoil, we had trouble getting the IRP implemented, we had trouble digging out of that. And when you have trouble, as you've seen with disaster or anything else, that's when people step up. And that's what happened here. We put out the, communicated what our problems were, they could see it. A lot of us lived in the community and had wives or husbands that were having some of this stress and so it was well-known among everybody. And when the call went out, a lot of people answered, 18 on CFoc, seven to eight with Christopher and the originals that were on this committee. We've come a long way. When you look at a lot of the things, they're now low or moderate influence. We were having high significant stuff, we need to change right now, we need to do this. So, your comment about, are we just spinning our wheels, there's some validity to that. But the other thing I would offer is that if you go this path, you essentially do away with internal audit. And there's nobody looking. Because what we're trying to do is use this risk assessment that the R S M's gonna be doing and look at where they're identifying risk and then we go look at that. And I think Ms. Sellers will testify that we've been trying to not do something just for the sake of doing where we've identified risk. You've brought in a lot of very well-qualified people in various tasks. And Sellers is one, she's given a, a great help and, and oversight to the financial management here. You've got an H R director that is world-class now. When you have leadership like that, it trickles down and the people step and do the work. The things we're finding are minor. I'm afraid if you stop looking, it's gonna be like a ship, you veer off just a little bit, pretty soon you're way off from where you're supposed to be. So, I would hesitate to just not have anything going on. Now, we may wanna reduce the budget. The other impact I would ask you to consider is you brought R S M with an expectation of quite a bit of work. And if you take that work away, will R S M still be?
Yeah, no, oh, oh, no, I, I don't misunderstand me, I, we, I don't wanna take any work from them. I want them to have exactly the risk assessment, I want all that stuff done, don't get me wrong.
Somebody's gotta guide it.
Well, yeah, I mean, we'd come back on us as a board to guide it with staff telling, you know, where to go and what to do with it. And, and the assessment, we would work with R S M to have that assessment done in a workshop, I would imagine, with them and we're talking about the risk assessments and things like that. So, I don't wanna get rid of any, like, stop auditing altogether.
Well, again, each one of those audits, as somebody from the audit committee, which is involved in that process, is looking at the scope, is approving what they're looking at, evaluating what those results are, maybe sometimes telling, go back and look again. One of us audit professionals has been doing that. If you don't have that, you're gonna miss stuff. And I'm not trying to defend, yeah, I'd love to stay home. But.
I got, I could go ahead and add.
But I guess my question is, when we miss, what do we, we hired R S M to look into that, so then the audit community, so the audit committee looks to make sure R S M isn't missing things.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so, so I can go ahead and add to that. So, one, we do have some ballot language in, in both of those two voted pieces and by the citizens that do happen to be addressing some names of some committees. I would suggest whenever these do come up again for ballot, that you possibly look into, if you're leading the, every district needs to have controls. Not every district will have a CFO be a CPA. But still, at the same time, your finance department would, well, the entire district is responsible to have internal controls. And so, as far as developing a scope, that can be brought to, to any board by a finance director, a CFO. Scope gets developed, you have statute that indicates certain things that do need to be done currently. How they had that statute asking for the five-year risk assessment, that is actually even a best practice. Granted, they had it in statute, but it's a best practice for, to have a firm come in, do the risk assessment. You don't even need, a, a district doesn't even need an audit committee to do that. But they do need to have an audit or, or a firm come in to do the risk assessment. So, the function of having an audit of, of a risk assessment report done on that, of having the sales tax audited, to have the referendum audited and, and to have a firm, like our internal audit that we've hired to do, those would be functions. Many times I've seen in other districts, a lot of districts actually don't have an audit committee until they need to call on the services of an audit selection committee. So, there, there's a lot of districts that don't have an audit committee, but a lot of them don't have some board lang, or some ballot language that got voted that said you have to have an audit committee. So, so that's where I would recommend, I think that your district, a district's financial staff would be able to assist with the scope and the development because they would be, everybody's supposed to do a, a fraud assessment at some level when you're trying to determine, you know, where the concerns are. And, and many people from the CPA firms, both the internal and the external, they do do the risk assessments with you guys. I think at least the chair, I know, got one, a couple that, so those functions can occur without having an audit committee. So, because you've got the finance staff.
Limitation to that is that it lacks a key word and that's independent.
Right.
If they're on staff setting scope, they're actually asking you to look at what they want you to look at. And there's not somebody outside saying.
That's a good point.
I mean, that's the, what the audit committee does is give you the independence. That means if you've got staff bringing you stuff, you have to evaluate whether or not that's adequate, whether it's complete, whether it's there, whether it really ties in to what this risk assessment says. Now, whether you have a consultant contract with a different firm, I'll just, for example, have C R I do the oversight on your behalf on a compensated basis, you still need somebody to translate for your, for you guys.
Okay, so can, may, if I can continue my point then. Based on what they've just told us, we need independent, we need views of the mill and the sales tax. We need somebody to make sure that everybody is in compliance and following, you know, checking on the audit so that there is that outside look. Is there a way we can table this for now? Let the committees talk amongst themselves and see what would be best for them, how they could handle it and have them bring us some ideas rather than us throwing ideas at them. And let them talk about it while we still try and again, bring in more people. And if we are able to bring in more people, then this may be a moot point. We may be able to get enough community buy-in, otherwise, you know, but otherwise still, have the committees talk to each other and how do they feel about, do I, I wanna get involved in the CFoc? Or do I wanna stay with audit? Or do I wanna, you know, this isn't my cup of tea, I don't wanna be put on either board. I think, I think we need to hear from those actual citizens who are doing this to see where they feel they best suit. I don't wanna, you know, just tell, tell the CFoc, well, guess what, you're on, you're on this committee now and where they're going, this is not what I signed up for. And then we lose them too.
No, I agree with you. I think, I think if you, if you ask CFoc members potentially to be on the audit committee, they may, I agree, they may be like, no, I'm out. Right, like, because that's not what their original intent was. I, I agree, I think that we, we can, we can, we can table this if we want to. I think we're always, will always be dealing, I just, I don't, I don't see 20, 10 people, eight people, five people running up and saying, sign me up for either one of these.
I, I do know that, I like the idea that R S M would do the report.
Yeah.
Like, for the CFoc.
Sure.
I mean, that's so cumbersome. But I do know the chair looks at details, very finite details. And I don't wanna take that from her, she's done such a great job on that. And I don't think, as far as people leaving, I mean, we're talking about five people here. I don't, I don't know, I, to your point, you would be my independent, uh, person that would be reporting to us as far as audit findings. On the audit side of it. And then maybe Ms. Harrigan, the chair, would be on the other side. I don't know how that would, you guys, probably we need to set up a meeting for that.
No, I, I don't disagree.
Yeah.
I think if we're gonna, if we're gonna, like, all of a sudden, strike charters, change charters, combine, eliminate, whatever, like, we need to.
I would, maybe we.
To have a full.
Right.
You know, I mean, I don't know if we necessarily need to, to, I, I don't, I don't know what the best, next best step is, I don't know. But, yeah.
Just have one thing. I think we, obviously, we have to have this committee.
Yes.
So.
A committee.
A committee.
We have to have a committee.
Looking at the CF, the millage.
Both, both functions, doing both functions.
Millage and sales.
So, reaching out to them, seeing what they think is important, but again, like the superintendent serves, this is ultimately us.
It is, but we need to make sure they're.
Absolutely. We've got to get buy-in, find out what they wanna do, absolutely. And because of the lan, because of the ballot language or the resolution attached to the half-cent sales tax, that specifically says audit committee on that language, yeah. So, this has to be called the audit committee or we can call it the audit and CFoc committee or something. But because that language is there, it must be.
Oh, in the sales surtax?
Yep.
In the sales surtax, it says the word audit committee and in the new referendum, it, uh.
It's an independent.
It says independent citizens' committee. That other phrase CFoc is not specifically listed in that one.
So, at least until 2032 or whenever the half-cent expires, we've gotta have this audit committee.
Well, in, in name only.
In the, in it, in it, fair enough.
The function has to, has to look at the sales surtax, yes.
Yeah, so.
You can call it audit committee and they can, they can look at just the two taxes.
So, in any case, we could.
I would think it'd be well to look at doing the blend, keep the committee structure going forward at this point. One of the things that, at least under my leadership, we've been trying to do is do less. If it isn't in the risk assessment, if we don't see something that's indicating it, we've actually done a lot less than we have in prior years. I wanna continue that, I don't wanna do something just for the sake of doing it. I'm not here to make money for R S M and give them a lot of hours, just to give them a lot of hours. I've tried to, like we did with this H R report, have something that comes out and improves the procedures, helps the staff and helps the district. If we can't do that, I don't wanna start it. I would encourage just to keep the format, at least for the next couple of years till we can get things sorted out. But I would also encourage you as the members, when we come forward and say we recommend we do this audit, be very, very hard, inquisitive, why are we doing it? What's the benefit we're gonna get? How much is it gonna cost? And, and, because if it can stand that challenge, then it's worth doing. If it can't, then we don't need to go back there. As a chair, I'll try and not bring anything to you that we don't really think needs to be done. I am a taxpayer and I'd like to see my taxpayers go to teaching the kids, not paying specialists. But you've got the two resolutions ballots that either directly or indirectly are calling for this committee. I'd really believe there is a function for a district of this size to have an audit committee function. And you've tried to bring in staff, we would love to see qualified staff members that are independent of Mr. Chapman and reporting directly to you, but they are so rare that anybody that you hire are gonna have 20 others asking them to come work for a lot more money. That's the nature of what we have right now. There's a shortage of accountants and auditors and, you know, they're making, they're coming out of school, some of them, and getting six figures just to start. So, you're gonna need to somehow limp along with this structure until we can do it. There are ways to do more advertising, one of the things is, we may sponsor some continuing educations that the local F I C P A have here, where you get to have somebody come out and talk about. This is what we need in front of them as they start that training session. Well, these are the guys coming to get the training, so, you know.
And I think too, with having R S M for the first time this year, you know, it's different when C R I's been here for a long time. So, I think there may be some validity in keeping that function, you know, the actual audit committee. I think we can combine everything together. So, let me, let's, can, can I ask this, Mr. Kennedy?
Just have one more thing to say.
Okay.
I was just gonna suggest that we cut out this, just so we have somewhere to go from.
Right.
Cut out the entire one-mill oversight subcommittee section. Everything else, all the other edits still makes sense. We still do everything that's been talked about, which is talk to all the committee members, do more advertising, although we've been talking about recruiting members for these committees for years, for years, and we just can't find people. I'm not saying we should quit, but I'm just saying, it's a tough road to hoe. And then on page one, what I think is really the most important edit is currently, the charter that the audit committee is operating under says, the committee will consist of seven members.
Sure.
So, we're out of compliance and have been out of compliance.
And don't have a quorum.
A while. So, we've at least gotta fix that membership number. So, take out the whole subcommittee, leave all the other edits you've given me. So take out the whole subcommittee, leave all the other edits you've given me.
Four or five right now, because there's only five, if we combine it all.
If we combine.
But the edit I have is, the, the edit here is the committee will consist of three to seven members.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that would get us in compliance.
Correct.
With the charter.
No, I'm okay with, with doing what you just said.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So then we can, at least we can approve this edit at the next meeting or whatever.
Sure.
And then we can come back to it with all the input we just came up with today.
Works for me. Sure. Yeah, I'm good with that. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, guys.
Good convo. All right, next is the student progression plan. Yes.
We did land on combining them both.
And bringing them, bringing the language together.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're, we're going to do like a bridge the gap charter.
Thank you.
Until we get.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jim.
Student progression plan, code of conduct.
Okay.
Come on down.
Thank you.
AC at two thirty, three o'clock.
It's three thirty.
Three thirty.
AC gets shut down at three in this building.
Kind of a little warm.
For once, I'm not cold.
Yeah, I'm not cold either.
That's hard, that's rare.
That's weird. Yeah, you're ready. He's just complaining about his.
Good afternoon again, Chair, Chair, Board members, Superintendent Chapman. Dr. Breslin and I are here to walk you through the annual suggested updates to the student progression plan and the code of conduct. You should have in front of you a binder that has, in the front pocket, a change log for the SPP, the student progression plan, and for the code of conduct. And then two tabbed sections in the binder itself. One representing the red line changes to the code of conduct and one for the student progression plan. I'm going to take the student progression plan part of the show, and Dr. Breslin will walk you through the code of conduct. The student progression plan this year, the changes are much lighter and less significant in scope. So this should be a fairly quick affair. And then Dr. Breslin will walk you through the code of conduct, which has more substantial revisions to it. So for my part, there's not a, oh, sorry.
Are you gonna, I just want to ask you, are you going to address where these came from? Is it like statute? Is it, you know, something we found didn't work well?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
So the student progression plan is really the annual, annually updated document that guides the way students progress, progress in the district. Everything from registration to being promoted through grades to graduation criteria, concordant testing. Some of, a lot of it is guided by statute, Ms. Felton, and then a lot of it's guided by staff recommendations. All, all operational instructional departments have the opportunity to give input annually. And we typically try to wait until the end of the legislative session, although the, obviously, this year, that was more challenging, just to see what legislative changes there are that may impact the student progression plan. When it came to the student progression plan, there were many fewer legislative changes that affected the progression plan itself. The change log, we've tried to be very helpful. You'll see the page numbers, the change type. We tried to put whether it was legislative in nature, whether it was a staff recommendation under the change type, the change itself, and then the rationale over on the right. We've also tabbed your folders, so you can see, like, purple and blue sticky notes in the section. Those are the sticky notes, the same colors that you have in your folders, for kind of key changes that we're going to cover during the, during our presentations to you. And then when Dr. Breslin gets to the code of conduct, she actually also has a slide deck, because again, those changes are a little larger in scope. So please feel free to, to ask any questions as we go along. But I'm going to, I'm going to kind of hop through the tabbed pages in your, in your binders here. And then I will note it on the change log that I'm scrolling through as well. Okay? So the first change here is page twenty-one that I want to highlight. And really, twenty-one through pages in the mid thirties, you'll see a lot of language around intensive instruction and kind of what we do to support students who are struggling in either reading or math. There's been a lot of state changes in language around elementary math and reading intervention and the requirements along with that as the kind of fast test has come along. And, you know, the state has really articulated not just students with a substantial reading deficiency, but students with a substantial mathematics deficiency as well. And so on page twenty-one, you'll see we, again, added some language that matches the DOB's technical assistance paper guidelines just around who's eligible to support students who have been identified as having a significant mathematics deficiency. And then in subsequent pages, like on the very next page, you know, there's some language around students who score at least a level one or a level two in reading and math, we need to collect additional data points to determine the need for intervention. And then it kind of, you know, we already had language in there that talks about what those interventions need to look like. A lot of this language is driven by statute, as well as the state technical assistance papers around reading and or mathematics substantial deficiencies.
I've got a question. On page twenty-two, you're saying paragraph number two. If a student scores a one or a two in reading or math, should be provided additional diagnostics.
Correct.
I think that probably should be, will be.
Um, well.
I don't, I don't know, you know, legal language, but.
So the, especially, you know, when it comes to students who are scoring, you know, below tenth percentile or below twentieth percentile, we have some obligations around, you know, reaching out around substantial deficiency. This really speaks to kind of the need to start collecting additional data points and getting students into the MTSS process. And then identifying if there are additional strategies, targets, goals. But really, this kind of speaks to that multi-tiered system of support process. But I, I'll make a note of your recommendation. We can take a look at that. I, one thing I did forget to measure or speak to, and Dr. Breslin will reiterate at the end of her presentation, we're bringing these proposed changes to you today. And then they'll come before you on the twenty-fourth of June at the board meeting for kind of preliminary approval to advertise. They get advertised for thirty days, just like a change in board policy does. And then at the special meeting on the twenty-ninth of July, the kind of budget meeting, and then we'll have a little follow-up meeting to approve the, these two documents as well. So that's kind of the timeline we're looking at. So after we present to you today and get your feedback, we'll make any corrections that are necessary. We'll bring them back to you on the twenty-fourth for approval, and then we'll do that thirty-day advertisement. So I'll say, I'll make that recommendation to the team, Ms. Bray, and see if.
Thank you.
All right. The next area I'm going to hop to is page twenty-six, again, your next purple tab. This is language from our code of conduct that we just replaced here. This is, again, aligned to statute and just kind of articulates the parents' rights to inspect curricula and instructional materials and have access to those as part of their student's education.
May I ask a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Every once in a while, I'll get emails from parents and, and they're frustrated or upset because they don't feel like they're getting enough communication from teachers. On the other hand, teachers have things to do, and they just, you know, if you have, I don't know, seventy students, can't spend your email, your time all day just responding to parents and what's going on with my kid? And how's he doing in math? And what's his reading grade? And what are your, I'm just curious what your thoughts are on that. I mean, I understand as a parent, like, I want to be able to interact with my, my kids' teachers, and I want to get updates. I'm trying, I'm trying, I think what I'm hearing from them is I'm trying to participate in my child's education, and I don't feel like I'm getting responses back in a timely manner from teachers. But on the, on the teacher's side, I suppose I get it. Like, I don't have time to just respond to fifty emails from parents every day. But anyway, I just.
I mean, I would say, like, probably all, most of our problems often stems from a failure of communication and relationship building.
Yeah, I imagine that.
When we see teacher, when we see parents that are really happy with their schools and teachers and principals and systems, it's usually because they feel like they have a strong relationship with those people, and they feel like, you know, communication's open. So I think in general, our, our schools and teachers do a wonderful job of responding to parent input. And then I think that's when, you know, we direct, if, if a, if a parent is concerned about, about communication from a, from a teacher or school, I think that's when the principal gets involved or we get involved to set up that, you know, parent-teacher conference or to, you know, follow up to make sure we're communicating effectively. But I, um.
And we do have at the refresh conference, we do have some courses on parent engagement. Jodi O'Meara does an excellent job in leading those courses to talk about how we can better engage our parents, because it is important that they're partners in the learning process with their students. So continuing to offer those courses is important. And I know technology is working on trying to get focus as a, a main tool to communicate. I know as a parent, as my child matriculated through the upper grades, different teachers have different preferences on communication. It could be difficult to keep up with as a parent, especially a working parent. And so having some unity in that communication tool is really helpful for parents. And I know IT is, is working on that process as well. So some improvements that they're.
Let me finish up here real quick, if I could. So what, I'm trying to my face. So, but what, like, a reasonable expectation? If I emailed my teacher, I'm a parent, I email my kid's teacher three times a week, I should expect. Having been teachers yourselves, I mean, what's reasonable? I should, I hear back.
Three times a week?
Three ti, I don't know. I mean, I'm just curious. Is it reasonable? Should they respond within two days? That's a lot of, some of what I see is, you know, my teacher is not being responsive. My kid's teacher is not being responsive to me. And on the other side, I'm thinking, well, she's probably got fifty emails. What's reasonable?
Three, three times a week to email a teacher, to me, would indicate that there needs to be some. So if I was principal of that school and that was happening to one of my teachers, I would ask the teacher to let me know, and we have that open line of communication. Then I would reach out to the parent to say what really is the root of the problem here. There seems to be something else, and that maybe that's where that communication is more widespread than just what is seen in the email. And so reaching out to that family could help engage the family and maybe take some pressure off of that teacher if it really is that level of frequency.
The, the other thing then is I get emails that say, and by the way, if you're sending emails, that's fine. That's my job, and we want to interact with you and help whatever's going on. But, you know, let's take a, a middle school that has, how many students are there in middle schools? A thousand, twelve hundred? And so that, I emailed the principal three times over the last month about my child's, you know, reading grade, and I'm not getting any response. And I just think it's probably on the principal's list somewhere, but she's got twelve hundred students in her school, and she's got a hundred parents that are emailing her every day. So what can we do to ensure that it's like a triage? Like, we talk about things that come to us as school board members. They need to be triaged through the superintendent or some process so that they get answered. And I'm, I'm just wondering how we can support teacher or support principals? Because I imagine what happens, they get, they get that email, right, about Mary Jones's reading grade, and then the fire alarm goes off. Or, you know, there's something going on down in the ESE classroom, and they thought they were going to get to it. But then thirty more emails come in above it, and they just never get to it. And then Mrs. Jones gets frustrated because she's not getting a response to her email. I mean, how do we help the principals triage that stuff to the deans or to the student support specialists, whatever they are, and say, you need to hand, respond on my behalf?
I mean, I, I think, one, you know, I, the number of, of people in education who are teachers, principals, who actually have a background in communication or in a non-education domain is pretty small.
Right.
So, I mean, I think that's a skill, skill set we need to grow as an organization. So Dr. Breslin talked about some ways we're growing that with teachers. We're also doing some work at our leadership conference with sessions around how great schools and great school leaders communicate. I think it's a culture-building thing. I think it's a customer service thing. So I think there's some capacity building that has to happen. And then there's just, you know, ways that, that we can improve at this level of the organization too, I think, to better support our principals in managing those workflows. The kinds of expectations we have, the kind of time we help create for them to, to do those types of tasks, because the principalship, as you know, is a very difficult position. You're, you're dealing with everything from what's my child's reading scores all the way up to, you know, major security issues on a daily basis and state inspections popping up out of nowhere unexpectedly on your campus. So I, I think there's some things we can do to, to better support principals too. But I, I do think there's a, a training and maybe a sharing of best practices component that we're, we're, we're working on this summer actively with principals.
Delegate everything that, that other people can do for you as a leader. Like, delegate it all. You have, you have to get feedback. If you delegated it, I, I need some feedback on what you did for that. But I just see that kind of throughout the whole school system. It's because people are so dedicated and they're so hardworking, they think, oh, I got an email. I got, it's my responsibility, I got to respond to it. Like, no, you, no, you don't. You have people that work for you. Delegate that, you know? And, because it is, it does get frustrating once in a while to see those emails, and they're pretty frequent. And I know that the principals are working hard, but these parents then are just, I didn't hear back. I didn't hear back. I didn't get anything back. And it's probably happening, or maybe ten days or two weeks down the road, somebody will get to it. But that process, that whole process needs to be improved. And I don't know if it's a communication, I don't know what you mean when you say by communication exactly, but it's just a, it's a management, process management problem where things aren't. Like, I'm actually going to propose when we get to the budget talks that we have that we give Mr. Chapman or the superintendent's position, what I call an executive officer position, someone that's, that's going to help him and Danielle deal with this kind of stuff that, so that, you know, the superintendent isn't responding to individual parents about things, unless it's something really super important, like, you know, some of the things that have happened. Because it just takes away that leader's time from being able to focus on the, on the bureaucracy that needs to happen. And I think some of these teachers, and I'll get off my soapbox in a second, are so dedicated to teaching that, and I saw in the Air Force, who I know, that's what I refer to, because that's what I did. The, a squadron commander who was in charge of, you know, twenty-five planes and the training and, and the maintenance and all the bureaucracy and the flight records that goes along with it. He'd just rather be out there flying the planes, right? Doing this, I want to go fly four days a week. And, but you can't do that as a leader. You just don't have that kind of time. You have to be managing this bureaucracy. And these schools that are like little squadrons, you know, they have twelve hundred students, and they got a hundred employees, and they got a budget of a couple million dollars. And they, these, these teachers probably want to be in those classrooms, you know, doing their thing. But like, no, you, you've got to manage this bureaucracy, right? You're going to have to find a better balance between you being out there supporting the teachers and doing your thing as a principal, but yet there's this bureaucracy around you that just has to get managed a little bit better. And the principle that, as a leadership coach myself, is I would say delegate everything. You know, if that comes in, who, 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 okay, I got this email from Mary Jones. Okay, Dean Smith, you're responsible for it. And, and within the next forty-eight hours, I'd like you to immediately respond to Mrs. Jones. Give her a timeframe of when she's going to get a response. And then keep courtesy copying me on the emails, so I can follow up on it. Once you have a resolution, get back to me. I think that would help a lot of our, our problems, because I just see a lot of teachers, I'm sure, that are, are principals or former teachers, and they want to be quote-unquote, "out there flying the plane." But they really got to start managing the bureaucracy better around them to show the parents that they're being supportive and stuff. And I know they are in many ways, but it's just an overall theme that I kind of see, and I'm just finally having an opportunity to pass that along to you. So I will step down.
Just, just for Mr. Tatum, I had a hundred and fifty kids every year.
Right.
And that doesn't count the ones who come in and then leave, and then more come in, and then more leave throughout. So, you know, you could have up to two hundred kids come through your room every year. Generally, I have found that there's one or two parents every year who want an email response or a phone call back within five minutes.
Right.
Why, why didn't she call me back? Well, I'm, I'm in the middle of teaching a class right now. I, I can't do that. And you also have to keep in mind with teachers, you have a half an hour for lunch, which is usually your one opportunity all day to go to the bathroom to make photocopies. And if you get a planning period that day, great. But then you're also making photocopies and grading papers. And then you're up until midnight grading, if you're an English teacher, up until midnight grading papers every night during the week and hopefully get one night off. And still trying to reply to emails and all that other stuff. So we had the expectation, and every school is different, based on what their administrator tells them, we had an expectation to return emails within two days, two business days. I know for the administration, they had an expectation to return emails within twenty-four hours of a business day. But you also have to keep into account that when you have one of those parents who feels like they're not getting heard, they, they will call over and over and over and over again or send multiple emails, working their way up the chain. And if they want the principal to call back, it does or send multiple emails, working their way up the chain. And if they want the principal to call back, it doesn't matter where you delegate that, because they're going to be upset that the principal didn't call them. Um, so it really is very much a juggling act when it comes to trying to figure out who to respond to. Um, I had a parent who, no matter what I did, uh, it was never right. Um, it didn't matter if I called her right away in between classes when I had five minutes of passing period. Uh, I, I wasn't fast enough. Um, I didn't send her enough details of information, even though she had access to focus and could see absolutely everything. Um, and so finally, I did have to delegate that one to my principal and said, look, I, I, there's no winning here. Can you please see what the, the, as Dr. Breslin said, what the real issue is? Because sometimes there is something else. Um, so, you know, just, these are so many different moving parts in trying to communicate. Um, and, you know, and of course, there's all the stuff from the district of you have to do this, you know, certification and you gotta get this done. You gotta do this. Um, teaching is an eighty-hour a week job. Um, despite the fact that we get paid for thirty-five. Um, so, so, you know, the, just some other things to keep in mind. And I know communications, things happen, things get missed. But, but please, you know, but just on behalf of the teachers out there, that they're doing their darndest on minimal sleep and lots of caffeine.
Well, that's why I was making the point. Like, I don't know what's reasonable. If I had a hundred and fifty students, I don't know that I'd ever get to all of my emails and, and send them back. So, you know, I just, and, and just sometimes telling people, this is the final answer, right? And I'm sorry that you don't like the final answer, but if you don't, then here's my final answer to you on this. I think we've gone as far as we can. And then they, they can come to us, I guess, at that point, but.
And they will.
And, and they will. But, you know, the, the principal has given a final decision and this is my final answer. And I appreciate the dialogue that we had. And as far as I'm concerned, this issue is, is closed at this point. And then they have the opportunity to come to us, like, I guess, at that point, but.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of kind of what it looks like to answer your question.
That's what I said. I, I'm sure that, I don't know what's reasonable. A hundred and fifty kids, twenty-five, thirty emails a day. Like you said, I'm doing lesson plans and grading papers, having been an English teacher myself. Like, that's a more difficult job than the science teacher or whatever, you know?
And those math teachers, when they just got that thing right there and they just check if it's correct, I'm like.
That's right.
Hey, no.
Anyway, it's, it's a people thing, right?
It is.
This is not a math problem. But somehow I'd like to be, if we could stop, somehow stop a lot of the emails that come that say, I, I asked to get with the principal and he or she never got back to me. Um, it'd be nice to, it's one way to say, well, actually, this case is closed. And, you know, I guess I can send it to Dr. Cordill or whoever after that, but the principal's given a final answer. Because it looks to me like the principal's not being responsive. Uh, and which I'm sure they either A, are, or B, they're just so busy that they haven't had time to get to it yet. But some triage process where we keep track of all this and anyway. Okay, that's it. Thanks.
Chair, Mr. Chair.
Oh, yeah.
Chair Chair. To your point about delegating, every school has APs.
Has a what?
APs.
APs, yeah, exactly.
Right. So I don't necessarily want to put the entire burden on the principal.
Exactly.
I mean, we have APs out there that could probably answer the questions of the parents. So I just wanted to just put that point out there that I'm sure that they're, I get same emails. My child, my child, my child. And I get it. Your child is just as important to everybody here as they are to you. Probably more to them, I'm guessing. But sometimes the answer they get, they don't like. Well, I'm sorry. You know, we're not in a catering business. We're an education business. We can't tailor everything around one individual student. And focus, I would say, needs to be the sole source of, of communicating to parents. It's there. They have access. As I think Dr. Breslin said, some schools use this, uh, email. They'll do email. They'll do notes to the parent. I don't know. I think we go to cut all that out. One sole source, focus, and that's where you go. If you don't get your answer there, then you start, okay, teacher, I see you in focus. My, my child got a D on this reading. What happened? What do I need to do at home? Then that's when it would escalate up. But I think it should start with focus. And then that would be my number one suggestion is use one sole source for communicating to parents. And then parents can come, go up the food chain as, as needed. So, okay, that's all. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah.
I'd also like to point out, Mr. Tatum, that I am a science teacher. And my wife, who, who is an English teacher, would agree that she works harder than I do.
You're in bed at ten o'clock and she's still there with her little
She's grading papers.
red pen, right? Finding the, uh, you know, run-on sentences and all that kind of stuff.
I just give everything multiple choice. She has a great paper.
Running through the scanner and you're done, right?
So, um, I'm gonna hop forward to page thirty, which is the next tab. On this and a, a couple of the subsequent pages, we removed a clause, um, in the good cause promotion section. Good cause is just a different mechanisms by which students can be promoted grade over grade. Um, there was a, a sentence about, um, students who are English language learners and, um, a requirement for an E L L committee meeting to take place for good cause promotions. We have good cause promotion committee meetings that already happen. And we have a representative, um, from our ESOL department or representing the English language learner on those committees already. So we removed that, um, sentence out, um, from those good cause promotion sections. Hopping forward all the way to page forty-six and forty-seven. Um, we made a staff recommendation to the criteria for enrollment in high school credit courses. So this is, basically a, a proposed change to just, again, increase opportunities for students to access accelerated courses while they're in middle school. Um, this would be, um, it, it essentially just removes the GPA requirement from these and instead diverts to, uh, testing, prior year testing or parent or teacher recommendations for those courses. Um, again, just trying to remove some of the barriers for students to, um, display, um, promise to, to be successful in these courses and allow them the opportunity to take them. So we made those changes on pages forty-six and forty-seven.
Quick question there?
Yes, sir.
Just curious. It says, under district criteria for enrollment in high school credit courses, students earning a D R F in a high school credit course at the end of the first semester may be withdrawn and scheduled into a middle school course in the same subject area by the school administrator. Do they actually go down to middle school and take a course? Or how does that work when that happens?
This is actually in the middle school section of the student progression plan. So these are essentially middle school students who are taking a high school course, like Algebra One, maybe their eighth grade year. And so let's say I'm trying the high school course and I'm not being successful at it while I'm in middle school. I might get replaced into a middle school course. And you do that for a couple of reasons. You don't want a student to be unsuccessful, but also that, that course is counting as part of their high school GPA when they do get to high school. And so you don't want to, um, put that student at a disadvantage potentially if they're not being successful.
So it's not high school students that it's addressing there. It's middle school students.
Correct. Middle school students pursuing an accelerated, middle school students taking a high school level course while in middle school.
I got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. And then on the next page, page forty-seven, um, those changes continue, but you also see, um, just some small revisions to the, uh, way we calculate high school course grades. This aligns with state statute. Um, essentially, if you have an E O C in a course, um, we, uh, we're required to wait the E O C, uh, thirty percent per state guidelines. And so your semester one, semester two is each thirty-five percent. Your E O C exam's thirty percent. In courses without an E O C from the state, you're at forty, forty, twenty with a, uh, the district benchmark assessment or teacher-designed exam being that final exam. So that just aligns it with the state statute and the high school, um, the way we award grades at the high school level. Jumping over to page fifty-two in the programs of study.
Tab.
There's a, a sentence at the beginning of that paragraph, uh, basically saying the students are required to be enrolled on a full-time basis. We're adding a sentence here, creating a carve-out, um, for students who are pursuing the eighteen-credit, um, accelerated diploma option as an opportunity to be enrolled, um, part-time with principal approval. That's, um, to allow our schools to, um, create kind of alternative course and scheduling opportunities for students who demonstrate need. This is a relatively small number of students, but it, it meets an academic need we have in the district.
What, what does it mean? The, like, programs of studies grades, is that, like, what is it? You're talking about the eighteen-credit thing?
Correct. This is just the heading we use at the beginning of every.
Right. But you're talking about the, would we need, and I've talked about this kind of, um, off, outside of meetings to some of y'all, so it's not going to come new to maybe you guys, but maybe on the board. Would we need somewhere in our, in our progression plan? If we ever did anything, I say like the homeschool kids in there? Like what, I, I, I may be jumping ahead. Where did I see the homeschool? Oh, I am jumping ahead, sorry. But, like, but I guess it's just an overall question. You see the AP, like homeschool, um, page sixty, home education, um, students may be assessed a fee for test administration, right? Because obviously we pay for that.
Right.
For our kids who are obviously in us, or in our schools and we're getting the F T money. Now they're not. They're taking that. So we may be able to charge them a fee for that. My question is, if we, in the progression plan, would we eventually have to have in this plan? If we were ever going to use, I'm being hypothetical on, let's say, with homeschool kids or even charter or private school children, and we created an M O U or deal with them that said, you get to come out to, uh, the Guy Harvey program at Anna Marie Elementary. Moms, you get to bring your homeschool kids from ten to twelve and we charge them. Is that something, if we ever went and I, because I think I, well, I've heard Commissioner Diaz, not former, I guess now, talk about going to step up, going to that voucher route, et cetera, and be able to do that. So would we have to have that in the progression plan or no?
I, I mean, I think it's some, certainly something we could add. I think if we were rewarding credit for it, we should probably carve it out in this.
Like the AP, like the AP is different. Okay.
Yeah. So I think it would be, like, if, if we were offering like a one-off course.
Like a certificate or something like that?
Yeah. You know, we're, we're still giving them credit in the course. I think it is probably useful to carve that out.
Sure.
Especially with like kind of the personalized education program at the state level and some of those, those things that are now becoming, you know, more prevalent and are opportunities we could engage with some of these families with. I think it's wise to look at that language for this. So that's something I can bring back to the team and follow up with you on.
Thank you.
Oh, no, thank you.
I have a question there.
Yeah.
So I was up in Ohio last week and I went to a couple of graduation parties, excuse me. And there were these two twin high school girls that graduated. And one of them, they both had these C T E certificates, like vocational certificates, but uh, they're both going on to college. And I thought, that's interesting. And maybe we have this program. I don't know everything about how we operate here, but when I'm talking to them, they actually spent a lot of their days apparently in their senior year and maybe even part of their junior year at the vocational college, like at Army Anity Technical College. And so they got a certificate and, but they've still got enough credits also to go to college. One wants to be a vet and the other one wants to be a physical therapist or something like that. So I know that we have these C T certificates, but do we actually? So I, I haven't heard a lot that our students actually go spend time during the day over at these technical colleges to do it. Anyway, it just seemed like an interesting program, but I'll let you speak to that real quick.
Manity Technical College does offer dual enrollment options for our high school students.
Okay.
So, um, we do offer a variety of programs where our high school students can spend, um, part of their day or certain days on M T C's campus. Um, doing pharmacy tech, um, all kinds of different programs, um, each with different requirements. And they're earning, um, credit at that institution via that mechanism. We also have, you know, um, diploma seals for program completers and whatnot in um, C T pathways. So there's some, some different things, but I think what you're speaking to specifically is that kind of dual enrollment option, which we have a number of students participating.
So how do they, how do they have enough time to do that, but also meet all their high school requirements?
It actually double counts.
Okay.
So like if I'm, and it works this way, not just through a technical college, but like a university as well. So like, we're teaching courses at USF, um, from USF on our campuses right now. Um, or a student can take a virtual class through USF, for instance, on one of our campuses. They would, they're getting credit at that institution, but they're also getting credit towards their high school diploma via doing that as well. So it's almost like double dipping.
So do C T type classes, vocational classes, do they have letter grades or is it just more of a pass fail kind of thing?
Um, I'd have to follow up with you on the grading scale.
They, they do have letter grades. Um, um, one, a couple of students were high school students who were taking culinary along with my child last year. So they do get, they do get letter grades, um, at Manity Tech. Um, and, uh, so then those grades also count towards that as well.
Okay, good. Let's just keep that going, you know? And I think we're maybe talking, I say, we, we haven't talked about amongst ourselves, but uh, it's not doing something with one of our high schools maybe and really pushing the vocational training and really beefing up those programs to try and get people focused on those certificates.
And also a lot of, I mean, our schools that have technical programs, like Parrish with the automotive, they, they've got certificates there. Kids at almost every high school can earn, um, certificates of completion for computer programs, um, all sorts of stuff. So that also get added on to, um, for future job use as well.
Great. Thanks for the conversation.
Absolutely. And that's something we're continuing to try to find more programs and pathways for students on, trying to increase opportunities. There are some challenges with scheduling, kind of what the high school schedule looks like versus the number of hours required to complete a program at M T C. But we're consistently trying to find ways to be creative and create those pathways for kids.
Great.
I have a question on page fifty-four. It didn't have a purple sticker.
Oh, because I brought it up.
Cause you brought it in?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Um, the, has that number changed? At all then? That, uh, so semester one, two, and end of year, I'm guessing, is what that is, E O C?
Correct.
Okay. So is that what the numbers were last year?
Yes.
Okay. So we didn't make any changes. You just cleaned up some language somewhere?
This is a state requirement. The, the old version of the language kind of had it divvied into two columns.
Oh, all right.
Like, it, this makes it much cleaner and fully aligns with the state requirement.
Perfect. Perfect. Thank you. I just didn't have a purple sticky on that page.
I'm kind of, I put the purple stickies on the pages with the biggest changes and then some of the smaller, um, less substantial changes. I, I kind of left.
You put the purple stickers on?
Well, Irene did.
Did you delegate that?
I did. She also, it, it would look much worse if I did it, I promise.
It, it looks great.
So, um,
Good job, Irene.
Anyway, so the change log will capture all the changes. And then the, um, purple stickies were kind of what the biggest changes were.
All right.
Um, skipping over to page, um, sixty-eight. There's just a little bit of language added there that I think kind of flushes out, uh, what the intent of the paragraph was before. Um, and this is about who's eligible to walk in graduation ceremonies. We had a sentence that says, you basically have to be enrolled, registered at your high school and complete at least one course on the campus, um, during your graduation year. Um, we did add another sentence past that that carves out exceptions for full-time dual-enrolled students, early-admission students and students enrolled in a Manatee, exclusive from Manatee County sanctioned educational option. That was just to, uh, to better clarify for families that you have to, you know, be a participating student on your campus in some capacity in order to walk in your graduations.
I just have a quick question about that.
Yes, ma'am.
Say a student has, needs one more credit or one more class. And they didn't, they slacked. They were a slacker.
I was a slacker, so I understand.
Okay. All right. They were a slacker. They decided to wait till the last day. Is there any provision in here that that time cutoff for that, to have that, all of the required by five P M. on Friday before graduation on Saturday? I'm just curious.
It's not articulated in the S P P. Um, I believe, um, schools, you know, have all of these deadlines that kind of lead up to graduation for getting your cap and gown, for, you know, making sure you've completed your courses for, and you know, our schools, our, our principals, APs, uh, counselors, teachers work really hard trying to get these kids to walk in graduation.
Right. And that's why I'm going to bring this up, because at graduation, one of the students that walked finished. Finished a course six PM the night before. Yet another one. There had to be a little bit of intervention. For the student to be able to walk with their classmates. So I'm like, wow, such a difference in the two schools. You know, I'm like, why wouldn't you want that student to get across the finish line? I would be doing anything and everything I could. Although he's a slacker, she's a slacker. You know, you've been told, you know, so. We got to be conscious of that, I just wanted to point that out, so.
That's something I can bring back to and follow up with you on to see if it it would make sense to have a more universal expectation around that, just for consistency for families.
I think that would be perfect, there in that way, there's no gray area. Because I think that was great that that one school said, six o'clock, we'll take it. You know, and another was like, sorry, you missed the deadline.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So that's page sixty-eight, so now we're going to move to page seventy.
Seventy.
This just adds um the URL for the Seal of Fine Arts and I just uh. I wouldn't call that a substantial change, but I noted it just because the Florida Seal of Fine Arts is another. Diploma seal that's been added relatively recently and I just thought I'd call some attention to it. Essentially, it's for students who've spent multiple years in a in our arts program throughout school and. And meet a certain number of criteria um prior to graduation that they that we collect the evidence of and focus. And then um that seal is awarded on their diploma, so that's just another diploma seal option from the state. We um we choose to put the URLs for these seals just because sometimes the requirements change and it's easier for the. Instead of updating the SPP, just for us to link to the state. Next up, um page seventy-three. This is um at the, towards the top of the page, number four. Just an additional, this is um a new option for students. You can see that now completion of two years of marching band shall satisfy the one credit requirement in physical education. Or the one credit requirement in performing arts.
Hmm, that's awesome.
So that uh you can see that just again, uh some more flexibility from the state around meeting some of those graduation requirements via marching band.
Is that a class marching band or is that an after-school activity or is it actually a class marching band?
It's an elective. There's a class.
Too bad football wasn't a class, huh?
It's an elective.
Or baseball or basketball.
Band's an elective, yeah, band's an elective, but.
Yeah, we weightlifting and.
Right.
Yeah, I was just, but do you like basket, like if you join the basketball team, do you get credit? You can't like use that as a physical fitness credit or something?
Yes.
You can.
Oh, can you? Oh, so if you're playing a varsity sport, you don't have, see, I learned something every day, I'm glad I came to the meeting today. No, I didn't know, I mean, I.
As as somebody who was with the marching band for four years, that would have been really nice to have had that count.
Yeah, it wasn't like that when I went to school.
Because.
I still went to gym and.
We were, yeah, and I had to take zero periods so that I could fit in the marching band class. So I had to take a zero-period PE class and then have eight periods after that.
On page seventy-two, Mr. Tatum, the page before, you'll see at the bottom of that page where interscholastic sports can substitute for a credit.
Oh, that's good, we've evolved since whenever we went to high school, right?
Yeah, that's nice.
All right.
Yeah.
Similarly, on page seventy-three, um just a, we used to have a very large table that spanned multiple pages on this. Under assessment requirements, that kind of spelled out all of the concordant scores, those are scores. So like for example, you have to pass your tenth grade um fast assessment in ELA in order to be eligible for graduation. But you can also meet that requirement through SAT, ACT, CLT, you know, a number of other options. The state is consistently revising which tests count for those things, as well as what the score cutoffs are for those. We'll do an update for you in the near future about score cutoffs and how those have changed. But we wanted to just include the language that the state maintains that list and any of those tests are eligible. Instead of having to constantly update the SPP anytime the state makes a change on on their concordance testing.
They do.
Which they do like multiple times a year.
And I believe that's the end of my um purple sticky notes. Like I said, all of the changes are captured in the change log. And if you read anything or see anything outside of this workshop that you have questions about or concerns about. Feel free to to give me a call, text, or email, and I'd be happy to engage with you on it. We'll um take a look at some of the comments that you made during this time, I'll bring them back to the team and then we'll bring. A final document for preliminary approval on the twenty-fourth, okay?
Excellent.
Thank you.
Um before we go to code of conduct, we're taking a five-minute recess. So bathroom break.
Let me queue up.
Back at four twenty-five. We're in recess.
You know what I would like to see?
Somebody else wants to go.
All right, welcome back. And Dr. President, we'll move to you with the Code of Conduct.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Okay, so the Student Code of Conduct was led by Lisa Line, the Director of Student Services. She is a safety and student mental health conference today. And so I am here in her place to demonstrate the work created by her and the team. You can see here on the PowerPoint in the way that I've done this, there's also tabs, thanks to Irina, who did a lovely job tabbing this. So we can refer to the redlined copy. The items tabbed are also highlighted in this PowerPoint, the major pieces. We also have the change log, which is a little bit lengthier. And of course, we can cover anything that you might have a question on that. A lot of that is small changes, the major changes you're going to see in this presentation. The Code of Conduct was done a little bit differently this year with work groups convening first that consisted of school leaders to really give our principals. And they spent a lot of time looking at this and having really great conversations about some changes that need to be made to the Code of Conduct. And then that propelled into the committee meetings where you had parent, student involvement, people from the district, a wider variety. And so you can see how it was very systematically done. And of course, this piece, we'll get any feedback we have from you all, posted, as Mr. Jensen said, for public comment for 30 days before we get to the final version to be approved in July before the start of school. And so here are the notable changes here. You'll see the seven items, and we'll go through those in these slides. I also have them tabbed, as I mentioned. The extracurricular language is found on page 13 of the redlined version. And they should go in sequential order as we go through. So you shouldn't have to be flipping back and forth too often. This just brought in language that came to us, to our attention this year, that really needed to be included. And that is that for a student to participate in an activity on campus, there must be some parent permission for that activity. And so adding in that additional language there for the extracurricular clubs and activities.
Question.
Yes.
With both of these, obviously, well, we talked about the permission from the parents. The next one, too, and I'm sorry, I cut you off there before we talk about the half day. I thought the half day's always been around, but that's fine.
That has been, so not all the language in there is new.
Okay.
But it's just been completely rewritten. So you could see everything in context, the whole paragraph was put on.
My question is, potentially with the legislature, some of the stuff coming out on, I think the bill is signed yet, but a lot of athletics and other stuff, activities that charter schools, et cetera, private don't provide, they can come into public school.
Correct.
Question is, do they still have to follow this policy, I'm assuming?
So the Code of Conduct, and I'll lean on Mr. Pennley here a little bit, is anything we do for our students enrolled in our school district. Now, if they're a private school student, a virtual student that's electing to participate in an activity at a school they're not enrolled, whether it falls to them, I don't know, because they would be attending school in a different format.
Under parent choice, if they elect to come to a school, they would still have to have permission slips and things.
Right.
If they're going to be on an athletic team, if there's home zone school or otherwise, choice school, they would still need to have those permission slips and authorizations, just like our other students.
Gotcha, okay. I figured.
Chad, I've got a quick one here, too.
Laurie, or Dr. President, if I may, on the top one, and it does say per student, God, can it talk late.
It's 245.
The Florida statute 6A, blah, blah, blah. The parent guardian permission form must be done each year for each activity. So that, that's not our requirement, that's a statutory requirement, right?
Right.
Statute and regulation.
Yeah. It's like a ELL.
That's actually, that's actually a Board of Education rule.
Gotcha, gotcha.
With your physical and all that.
Yeah, okay.
At least for sports.
So one physical, I'm sorry.
No, but this is like if you, if you're in a club, you gotta get a form for that. If you...
Like, for sports, like, we had to sign, my daughter doing girls weightlifting and then lacrosse, like, two months later.
Yeah, you can't just, the parent can't just do like one.
One blanket, one, it's for every category that they want to play, okay.
Thanks, sorry to interrupt.
Okay, then, the next section, this references Senate Bill 1344, which changes some statute language more specifically around 1003.27. It is not yet signed, but is expected to be. And it, there's a lot of language in this bill. It's quite a lengthy bill related to truancy. And so we took and copied some language on truancy from the bill and then simply put in the Code of Conduct that we will follow all requirements for reporting truant student as outlined, and then reference the statute. And then we also referenced 1003.24 and 0.26, so that parents can refer to that statute. As we see this develop, once it's signed, there'll be some additional direction, I'm sure by the State Board of Education as well. And so we're already actively working as a district to show how we're going to document procedures based on this expected legislation. But this refers to that new language in the Student Code of Conduct.
But what is the punishment for truancy?
So it's quite involved, this new bill, showing the obligation to document interventions by the school, an obligation to report truant students to the board, an obligation to work with the court system. And so it's, it's very lengthy. So we're sorting through the language, detailing how the process will work in our school district and how we'll use elements to just focus and branching mind to document interventions. The new statute says, once signed by the governor, every semester, we have to report to the board students that are deemed truant within, by looking at 15 or more unexcused absences within a 90-day window. And so that will then be coming to you all to see this. And we don't quite know how that will work in a board being to report student names. And so that, to be determined, but we'll have to find a way to meet that obligation.
When I'm, when I'm talking with teachers, especially ones that are close and that know, like, hey, they can pretty much tell me whatever, like, the big, one of the biggest issues is absenteeism, there's no question. I think, I think FSBA last during Christmas time, I think it was someone else in there with me when we were talking about it, there was a superintendent that kind of brought this, when, because this language was being talked about in the next bill, or for this, this cycle, you know, back in December of last year. And so the, you can put all this stuff in here. To me, honest, to be honest, I think it's all just busy work. I'm being dead serious, right?
No, I agree.
It's busy work on you all as a staff to have to do all this. Until, until there is a consequence, not, to me, it's not the kid, it's the, it's the parents. Like, I mean, look, a 16, 17-year-old kid that, I mean, obviously, a fifth grader is different. They can't get possibly to school. But like, there's gotta be some, and I don't know what that is, right? Like, I don't, you can't, you know, tell a parent they gotta come to Saturday school, you know, or lunch the ten chain and pick up trash. Like, I mean, but until something like is actually, there's a consequence, it doesn't matter. Like, so it comes to the board and we read off 2,500 names of kids who have been absent 15, and like, what is that gonna, like, what does that do? Maybe the embarrassment of being read, you don't want that, but how can we really read that? I mean, I don't even know how that would work. So, and I'm not saying we're gonna, we're not solving that today. Obviously, it's, it's something that, back in the day, you probably were expelled and you were removed.
Right.
Right? And that's what happened. And so people ask, why, just remove the kid. You can't do a lot of that stuff. And we've talked about that here on some other occasions, you know, what absenteeism, you know, what's the other thing that, shoot, truancy is the big one. But there's been multiple where you just can't, like, remove kids.
Right.
You know, obviously, ESE and ELL has a lot of stuff to do with that. I don't know, I just, you know.
So I think there's a lot to unpack with the new legislation. And right, the teeth, there are some things we can do as a school district, but it's also a little bit more involved, this particular bill language. It does involve parent responsibilities, and so we'll see how effective that is. I mean, we also can overwhelm the system with the numbers as well. But I think there's a lot to pack. It's a step in the right direction of saying we, we do have a truancy issue statewide, and we need to document the interventions and see if that helps. And we also need to involve all our community partners to solve this, because it cannot be solved only in the school district. So I think the bill is stepping in that direction.
Well, you start finding parents, maybe.
And just for, you know, anybody out there listening, I mean, I've had students where I saw them less than, you know, they were there less than they were, yeah, absent more than they were present. But we, something that we have to keep in mind, though, and this impacts all of us, all of our schools, is even if the kid stops showing up, their grade still impacts the school.
Of course.
And so, you know, their, their zero on everything affects our school grade. Their lack of taking tests and not showing up. And I think that's something the public doesn't really understand either. Well, why don't you just get rid of them? Well, we can't just get rid of them, they're children, number one. Number two, the parent has to be responsible. And, and then when we had, like, particularly during COVID, where kids just kind of vanished off our radar. I mean, the, the schools have been working their tushes off trying to track down these kids because they're still on our roll. It's not like we can just pretend they don't exist anymore because they haven't been to school in three months. And so that's something I want, I want, just want to put out there for the public to understand that this isn't just something that we can easily breeze through as a board. There's a lot more that goes into it, and please contact your legislators.
Very complex issue, sure. So the next item speaks to another hot topic, bullying and harassment. And what we did here was update the state language. So what we did this year as a district is we reexamined our bully packet. We updated it to align with the state language, the state statute, and we aligned the statute into this.
I'm sorry, Laurie, what page are we on?
What page are we on? Are we on your deck or the book?
We are on page, well, I thought I marked it in here as well.
Yeah, we're on the deck or the book?
Let me tell you where it is.
23.
In the book, thank you.
23?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Starts, yeah, it starts on page 23, 24, and you'll see it, you'll see it continue.
Gotcha, thank you.
Sorry for interrupting.
No worries.
I'm trying to look at your deck and the book at the same time.
No worries.
Me, too.
Okay.
And so you'll see it aligned exactly to the statute language. What the bully packet allows, if there is a bully report made by any student, any parent, it's specific steps, it just gives clarity and guidance to the legal requirements and the best practices a school has to undertake in investigating it and documenting it per statute and then per best practice for both parties. The student accused of bullying and the student making the allegation. And so you'll see that, that language reflected, and it goes into harassment as well.
Just real quick on here, I see we've done, on page 24, changed to social media instead of like internet posting, which, that's fine. So off-campus, somebody posts something on Instagram to, about another kid bullying, teasing her, whatever. This obviously says, "The behavior disrupts the orderly environment of any district school or activity or interferes with the educational opportunities of others." So until it crosses a line at the school, I mean, I only say that because we can't police outside activities, right? Like, at some point, parents have gotta get involved. And so until it crosses to where there's bullying on the campus, maybe the picture is taken it on the campus and then posted to social media, somebody's upset and there's a fight because of what was posted on social media, like, it has to cross the line on campus.
Correct.
Correct.
Yes, sir. If it starts to disrupt the order of campus, the learning environment, then yes, it's a school.
We'd say you have a parent say, you know, little Chad is making, you know, on social media with this picture of my son, like, okay, just making sure.
Yes, sir.
I have a question about this as well. I'm, and I don't know where it would be if it's not, if it's in here, if it's not in here. So if you have a child who is harassing, physically harassing another student for bullying, picking on him, in some way physically making contact with that child, and then the child who's being harassed or being, you know, jumped in the bathroom, as I've seen, and they fight back, is that child still going to be punished even though they were defending themselves? Is that still part of statute?
So when you, when you have a physical altercation and then you document as such, yes, both students identified in the physical altercation would be documented. The level of severity would probably raise it to a Cessar code. We do, the state does review our Cessar codes if they have a physical attack, Cessar code. And they only have one, and there's not a related incident. They sometimes ask us where the related incident is, because generally, physical fight, Cessar, would involve two people. And so, yes, then it would look into using the matrix to determine who was the aggressor, what was the offense? Was it a first-time offense? Was it ongoing bullying? I mean, there's so many different factors. But yes, likely, in those situations, when a child and another child enter a physical altercation, they're both, no matter who started it, they're both going to face some kind of consequence. The levels may vary. If a child is attacked and did nothing and did everything preventative, then they would not face the consequence, which sometimes happens as well. But it has to be, that's what the school rely on them, to do the due process, to follow the code and do the whole revision. Sometimes we find that there were, it was an ongoing argument off-campus, on social media, in the classroom before, and the school, the student engaged in the argument verbally and then physically didn't start it. But were there steps that could have been done to prevent the physical, perhaps? But we rely on our, our school leaders to look at that and make the determination and follow due process and follow the...
All right, because that doesn't always happen. I can speak to experience in that my child was being constantly harassed, verbally harassed, finally turned around and told the other kid just to shut the heck up. That kid then turned around and punched my child in the face, and my child got a referral because he used not-nice language. So, you know, I feel like that when we, we throw kids into, you know, into this, it, we, we really need to be aware, too, of, of the victim. The victim needs to be protected from bullying and then not have it, then now they're being bullied twice, because now they being, being, well, not bullied twice, but being punished twice. First, they got attacked, and now they're being punished for being attacked.
Right, right. And...
So that's, that's a concern for...
Our hope is, so we revamped our bully packet, which is basically our process, and then we trained our SSSs and deans and APs this year. So I'm hoping by those measures that we stop incidents such as what you just described by better training, by better process, by clarity and procedure. So it doesn't arrive to the level of violence. And our, our numbers on the, I don't have them with me to quote, but our numbers on physical attack, we do see a decrease. So we're hoping some of these preventative measures are working.
Okay, thank you.
And so the next major topic brings us into threats against school, and you'll see that on page 26. And so this language was added, again, based on statute. So a lot of, a lot of statutory language added to the Code of Conduct to so everyone sees where we're rooted in here when we're adding, adding in the language and our consequences as such. And so this goes into something that we saw this fall happening in our community and throughout the state. And it's a false threat and the language associated with it. And as I mentioned, directly following that statute 1006.13. And you'll see in here, language related to expulsion, which brings us into additional language added, starting on page 67, related to expulsion. One of the major topics we had as a leadership team in the district and with our school leaders is the topic of expulsion. We always had a reference to expulsion in the Student Code of Conduct. It's not something that has been exercised. We have found, or in recent years, we have found that surrounding districts have chosen to exercise this for extreme circumstances. And as such, we sometimes receive students who have been expelled from a surrounding county attempting to enroll in our schools. So we have two things that we were hoping to accomplish in the Student Code of Conduct. One was to lay out specifics on the process if we had an event that rose to the level of an expulsion being recommended. And then two, what to do when we receive a student who has been expelled from a district in our state or another state who is trying to enroll. So you can see the language here, and again, it does align with Florida statute that a principal or designee may recommend to the district school superintendent the expulsion of any student who has committed a serious breach of conduct. So it's one thing to say it, but what does that look like? So the language goes into additional steps. And you can see that on page 67 and on the slide, steps one through six. So there would be an investigation, and sometimes the investigation would be the report from law enforcement if there was a serious offense that occurred off our campus that would, would rise to the merit of expulsion. It is recommended to the superintendent. The principal also has the duty to communicate with the parent or guardian. And as it goes through the process, eventually, if the superintendent agrees with the recommendation for expulsion after a thorough review, the district expulsion committee would work to review all the documentation and set a hearing date with the principal or designee. And in this case, it would come forth and there would be a hearing officer. And so what I mean by that is in other districts, they contract with maybe a retired superintendent, they contract with maybe a legal counsel. I believe a district just south of us uses legal counsel that they contract with that reviews the records and makes the determination for the expulsion. Just because we expel doesn't mean a student doesn't have a right to services. So that's something to keep in mind. An ESE student who has certain services still has a right to receive some of those services. So there's more than just, you move the student on and forget about the student. An expulsion is a calendar year, likely the student returns. But this is the language we are proposing with the option to allow expulsion in our district with a hearing officer for the next school year.
I have a question for that.
Yes.
So, so we do have a option, an option, I guess it would be proper English, for expulsion.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and one of this is saying that a student had, I remember where it is, special mandate commits serious breach of conduct included but not in limit, willful disobedience, open defiance of authority of a member of his or her staff, violence against persons or property, and any other act that substantially disturbs the orderly conduct of the school. Okay, so we have an out-of-control student, consistently out-of-control student, we can expel them. You're going through a process to do that. Does the state say we still offer services?
Yes, ma'am.
Can they be told to be homeschooled, virtual schooled?
Yes, if we follow
Okay.
procedures outlined, yes. So that language, willful disobedience, that all falls under the statute, uses that, that same language. So yes, we could expel them from our district, and they would have to seek their education elsewhere for a calendar year. Now, we do have some contracted sites.
Out of our control.
Out of our control.
It would just be totally the parent's responsibility.
Correct.
Okay, okay, that's what I want to clarify.
Now, if they receive certain services, maybe they receive OT or PT, and it's mandated in their IEP to occur a certain number of times a week, we would still offer services in some way, shape, or form to meet that requirement. But that would be the extent of our responsibility for that student.
Okay. How often have we expelled any students? Would you...
I have, I think I started working in the districts in 2003, and I don't know of a single instance.
I remember, Sid, excuse me if I may, we had like two in two years, but this was back in like 2015 and 2016.
Okay, I might have been working in another district that year.
Yeah, and it was, I remember, I don't know if Willie's in the building, but Willie was...
It's been a while, okay.
One of them was a brother sister team.
You're speaking of.
Brother sister team took on one of the administrators. I shouldn't laugh, it's not funny, but it's very, very rare is what.
Very rare. And I would expect it would also be, I mean, it does rise through the principal, the executive directors, the deputy, the superintendent. Before it, it should be few and far between. But in my opinion, we do have some cases and sometimes there are events that have occurred off campus that are of a particular nature that I would, I would have chosen to say, let's go through expulsion for this particular event.
Okay. Okay, that's good, I just didn't.
And the remaining language on there, as you can see on the slide and also present as you go through, I think it goes into page sixty eight, is students who have been expelled from another school district. Just to strengthen and clarify that language, we did work with that this year. We were able to counsel the students into other options. But this allows us to be real firm about that. If they were expelled from our surrounding district, there was a very good reason and we'd like to be able to mirror with the sending originating district did for their discipline.
I guess the only, I don't, that's alright. Only other thing I would say about the expulsion is I don't think that there's a strong enough message to parents that this is one of our options. We're, we've tried desperately to work with you and your child. But this is getting out of hand and there's something that, this is a tool we have. While rare, it's an option.
Yes.
So, because the climate is, they don't ever expel any kids. You know, they don't wanna lose the revenue. They don't wanna put that child on a bad path. But if there's a, a consistent issue that's disrupting that environment, I think this should be seriously considered because we have cases like that, I'm sure.
Yes, and these steps would keep it clean and consistent.
Right, right. And I like the idea that we could have an outside consultant that look at this that's not directly with the district.
Right.
Right, okay.
Absolutely.
Jennifer, may I? Laurie, you just said something I didn't, I didn't catch in the moment that you said it, but now it hit me. We can expel a student for something that happens off campus? Or did I mishear you?
You, you could, and Mr. Penley can probably say this better, better than I. But if you have an, an off-campus felony, depending on when the charges are filed and if there is safety concern that we feel to our campus, we could take steps. Did I answer that?
That's exactly what I would have said. And, and we work very closely with Department of General Justice in those situations where you have an off-campus felony or if there's a victim at the same school to make arrangements for those students to be either receive services elsewhere or to be removed from the, the population.
And we're talking about, you know, some sort of weapon extreme.
Yes, something.
A felony arrest.
Right, right.
Correct.
Robbery, murder, that kind of thing.
Gotcha.
Correct.
Gotcha. Thank you, I didn't know that.
And then page seventy seven, House Bill eleven oh five, I'm sure you all have heard, has changed our language regarding electronic devices. And so this updates to that language. An important caveat here is that it prohibits electronic devices from being used by elementary and middle school students during the school day. It remains that high school students are prohibited for using electronic devices during instructional time, except as authorized with teacher designated storage. So that, that was existing, that was in our student code of conduct. The update here is specific to elementary and middle during the school day. Most of our elementary and middle schools did not allow it. I know my son's school did not allow any electronic devices, so they won't see much of a change. Middle schools sometimes had them at lunch. Some middle schools had that option. This would not allow that because that would be considered during the school day.
Isn't there a, potentially a bill that's wanting to do a study on this or something that's out there?
This is in, this language, that language is in House Bill eleven oh five.
So this is it, okay.
So there are, I think, six districts. Don't quote me on that number.
That they're doing like a study with.
Six. Too small, too medium, too large.
I was about to ask, what were the sizes?
Yeah.
Right, to completely eliminate. We are, we are not in that study, to my knowledge.
I'd rather get the study result.
Don't volunteer, be the guinea pig.
I was gonna say, get the results back. Yeah.
And so this, as well as some other changes, is just gonna require a lot of parent communication before the start of school so they understand electronic devices. That does include smartwatches and things of that nature. We have a watch that allows me to track my sixth grader when he goes to school and he will have to take that off when he gets to campus cuz it would be considered an electronic device cuz it does, I can text him on it.
So they, they all, they won't be able to wear any i-watches, f-watches?
No.
They will not.
Wow.
Right, cuz they all access texting and the internet and distraction and do all kinds of things.
So parents need to go buy their kids an analog or digital watch?
There you go.
So they know what kind of.
The day he had the digital watch with the calculator on it and he couldn't wear, couldn't have the calculator and then people would like do the TV with it.
Okay, I never had that, but I must be older than you.
I still have, if I could.
Yes, ma'am.
It's alright. I still have, I've set it from day one. I still have a problem with high schoolers using electronic devices during instructional time. It prohibits that. It's that second half of that line I do not like. Except as authorized with teachers designated storage areas and board adopt zones. I just don't think that we should allow students to use their electronic devices when we have a plethora of devices in every school. Just look at the technical budget. Every school has devices. The teacher has the screen, has all the resources that student needs. I just don't like, except authorized with a teacher. I'll just have to say that, to stay consistent.
Well, not every classroom has them though. I mean, I had to share my cart with the classroom across the hall. So if they needed the cart, my kids didn't have computers and we're doing a research and so they, I would allow them to use their phones for research at that time. Then they had to put the phone away.
I get that.
And I think that's why they're doing the, the pilot in the six districts. I mean, right now, this, this is exactly this, the statute, the state language. But it likely, we, we could see changes depending on all the.
Are they doing this pilot for the whole, next, this whole next year?
That's my understanding.
Semester, okay. So we'll probably get towards the end of the year.
And some district have opted to do it.
Oh, yeah, a couple of years ago they were doing that.
Right, right, a clean cut.
We've had this debate up here already.
And they've, they've done really well. Their student behavior has improved significantly. So, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Kennedy.
No, that's okay, Laurie, I just wanted to ask about the, the
Yes, sir.
Exceptions for medical and educational needs? Does that apply to every grade level or just secondary?
That applies to every grade level.
So K through twelve?
So, for example, if you're in first grade and you have type one diabetes and your phone is necessary to measure your monitor, your blood sugar level, then that is allowable. You would have the necessary steps, you know, you have your five oh four or IEP to document. And then you would be allowed to have that device.
Now, here's the giant gray area, educational needs.
Yes.
Is that spelled out in the statute?
So it would go back to that IEP or five oh four team. And so if they're reviewing based on data, any relevant information, that it is part of the need of the child. For example, if you are visually impaired and you're using some sort of app that helps blow up the text in front of you, that would be, right, hearing. I do have a son that has a hearing aid and his phone is directly tied into that and he can.
So the educational need must be tied into a documented disability?
It needs to be part of the five oh four IEP.
Got it.
So you just have consistency.
So Mrs. Felton's class trying to do research papers, that's not an educational need.
Sorry, IB kids, you're gonna have to make it up after your hint.
Thank you.
And then the other large change, and this goes into the school board policy, seven five four zero point oh three. And language taken from that policy is just the use of artificial intelligence.
Oh, yeah, big one.
And the language surrounding that and making sure that that was present, I believe, during that board meeting. Someone mentioned that it needed to be in the student code of conduct, so we were sure to add that in there. So it just mirrors our policy.
I, the International Baccalaureate has a policy with regards to using ChatGPT and, and other IA, IA, AI. Long day. In place so that if you cite it, and it can only be so many sentences and you have to use a citation, is, is that something that we can include in policy? It, it's working really well and I mean, that's, and that's International Baccalaureate is worldwide. And it's working really well to, to regulate and by, by requiring citations.
Is it the one, two, three, fourth bullet? If they receive prior permission or consent from teacher, as long as they use an ethical manner and include proper citation.
That would encompass, okay, thank you.
And just a reminder of the date, so this is just the beginning, plenty of time for additional feedback. Additional feedback from all of our stakeholders. You'll see it, the intent to advertise on your next board meeting date of June twenty fourth. And then we move to adopt the final copy in July twenty ninth. So anything that doesn't get signed or does get signed or any other comment suggestions, we are open for that feedback.
I got a quick question. Earlier in the presentation, you talked about there were some work groups and some sessions and things like that that were tackled by principals and so forth. What has been the feedback from, from staff? Cuz I'll tell you what the feedback's been from teachers, parents on vaping. And this isn't anything new, right? Like, there's a famous song, Smoking in the Boys Room. Like, so like this, smoking in like bathrooms and stuff is not, it's not like it's, it's all of a sudden new because they have these vapes, right?
Sure.
I know we've installed some, some detection stuff at, at certain high schools, almost maybe all of them. I actually think just this last week, and I think you, you were, Dr. Wilson, you're the one who wrote back to this. I think we all maybe got the email about vaping or something, I believe. And maybe it wasn't this, this week or week, whatever. And I guess my, my, my question was, what do they feel like? Does, I don't think we're ever gonna solve it, right?
Right.
But do they, but are, are we as a board and the policies we have, are we doing enough to deter it as much as possible? Are we giving teachers and assistant principals and deans the, the range and the power to stop it? Like, or, or is that something, like, was that even talked about and looked at?
Certainly, because it's a constant challenge that our school leaders face. I mean, that's why we have the detectors in the bathrooms. And I know our own students get frustrated if they walk into a bathroom and someone is vaping.
Or the bathrooms are locked, right? Because we've got a control where kids go so that we can watch it.
Correct, correct. And so we, they did look at the, the matrix, they do recognize the consequences are there. Consequences are needed, but we're not gonna be able to consequence ourself out of this. And so I think just one of the things that we started to do this year, and I mentioned in that email, is try to, yes, keep the consequences, put in the detectors, stay strong on all of those elements, but work more on our education piece as well. So we did purchase the, the pig lungs and I'm not a science teacher, I was an English teacher. There's a, there's a better name for this. But they showed the effects of vaping and we got those and took them around to middle schools and showed them in health and science classes and trying to just educate and do more of those types of techniques to show the danger. So in addition to consequencing, also educating what happens to your lungs when you, when you choose to vape and those types of things to see if we can make a dent that way as well. I mean, I know it's a problem that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's just on us. I mean, obviously, they're buying it from somewhere, you know, they're, they're getting the access to it from somewhere. They're all pinksy greens and blue colors and, you know what I mean? So I, I, I mean.
Flavors?
Yeah, I mean, all the weird, you know, flavors. So I mean, I, I, it's not just a school epidemic. I mean, it's, it's, there's, I mean, it's the.
It's, yeah.
When you crack down with people selling it, et cetera. I just, I don't, I don't know, I don't know what the answer is. Again, are you gonna expel a kid who's got caught vaping fifteen, twenty times in the year? And then he doesn't, I mean, I don't know, I don't, I don't know what the answer is. But I know it's frustrating for teachers.
Correct.
And I think, I'm sure it is for parents and students and stuff as well. You know, I don't, I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't know.
So say a student's caught vaping. I didn't read the whole.
I didn't look at the matrix, I don't know what the.
I didn't know what the, so loss of certain privileges, I'm guessing?
So it does.
I'm assuming loss of the vape.
Let me try to.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, it's definitely, it is definitely.
And is that, while you're looking that up, I'll.
And it's also tested, the vape is tested.
Yep, it's tested for marijuana, I remember that, reading that.
What page are we looking at here?
We're looking at eighty one.
Eighty one, okay.
Right. Right.
And so those consequences and it is progressive in nature. We do have certain circumstances. I can't say specifically it's related to a vape, but it could be if a, if a school really is hit its frustration point if a student who continues to break the rule. It, it can go into the level of defiance, it can go into a safety plan. A safety plan could do things such as a daily search when you walk onto campus. We do have students that are on safety plans for various reasons. We do have students that are required to use clear backpacks for various reasons. Now, vapes are very small. And so those things can help.
We used to have a, we used to have a thing, we used to have a, for the cell phones, and then I think we got rid of this. When cell phones are first coming out, they're, they're big. This is like oh eight, oh nine, right? Somewhere in that range. First started teaching, you took a cellphone away, parents had to come and get it. Right, like parents had to come get the cellphone? I mean, if I was interrupted a lot like that, like, I would, that, there would be a concern, right? And I would make sure my child hopefully didn't do whatever they were doing. But I, I don't, I don't, I don't know what the solution is with the vapes, I just know it's an issue.
It, it continues, absolutely.
I just wanna make sure that we're doing everything from a board standpoint, policies and all that, protections of our staff. I mean, whatever, and maybe, maybe it comes to a point where our Evolve machines are, are taken to that level. You know what I mean? Like, I, I don't know. And, and, and then you can kind of see, go from there. Last thing, last question, and I don't wanna open up a whole can of worms on this, but I thought I saw, and I could be completely making this up. But I thought I saw a legislation, a bill that's out there that would allow parents to sign up for corporal punishment on their child in the schools. Am I real on that? Was that, was that for real?
There is a bill for corporal punishment.
Okay.
So some districts, from my understanding, still allow corporal punishment. And it did not have to have any sort of parent permission. And so those districts that do partake in corporal punishment now have to have some sort of parent permission, is my understanding.
Okay, so, so.
This packet that.
So if, if in our code of conduct, I'm not saying we're gonna do this, although it may deter some things, I, I wasn't around with code of, with, with corporal punishment. But I know that everybody feared Coach Shannon, who we all know Coach Shannon is.
Oh, gosh.
And is a very small individual, but he could bring the paddle. And so my question is, if, if you don't offer it, can we offer it with?
I would have to do some research to see if there's any sort of.
I mean, don't like, don't like.
Board policy again.
Don't put a lot of effort into it, I'm just wondering.
First, he wants to blow up the audit committee, now he wants to beat the kids.
Chapman's like, Chapman, Chapman's like, do not put that in here. No, I mean.
To Superintendent Chapman on this one.
It'd be certain kids. No, I'm just saying.
We need to workshop that.
It'd be certain parents that would say, yes, you can paddle my son.
I would have to research.
I'm not saying we're gonna do that, so.
It existed at one point.
Don't report it undeserved. It's been a lo, it's, I'm getting goofy, it's been a long
Let's save that for the next, we can save that for the next superintendent.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can ask that in the interview.
I do want to say thank you very much for, for both y'all, this is, this is a lot, going through the, the progression plan.
If you see additional feedback, please, please let us know.
And, and I want to say to the public, look online, this is your chance to give us feedback as well.
The next thirty days, yeah.
Right, it's thirty days. And, you know, because, that's the thing, every parent has to sign off on the student code of conduct every year when they come into school, am I correct?
So we don't have a sign sheet per se.
That they acknowledge this.
Right, so I don't believe district-wide we have a, an acknowledgement form for the student code of conduct.
Supposed to go home.
Right, so we, we make, we print, we print hard copies. We also communicate it out
So it's just a handout, it's not a sign and return that you acknowledge that you got this, like you do at every disclosure, that you have to
Right, I can't, I don't think it's in our registration forms or first day of school message, I mean, it's something that we could look into, but I don't
Probably need to.
I'm thinking to the parent level, I don't recall signing that.
Unfortunately, I have one last question. So a couple of years ago, and maybe you could help me with this, Mr. Chot. Someone that we both know has some concerns about students being prohibited from playing in sports after they had kind of served their time, so to speak. Did we resolve that problem? Is that, is that an issue still at all, or?
That, that language was removed, I believe, last year.
Was it, that all got solved?
Yeah.
Okay.
So they served their consequence, and then certainly at the discretion of, still at the principal and
Okay, but there's nothing in there anymore that says, you were suspended for ten days, but we're also going to keep you off the team for a hundred and eighty days of the rest.
That's no longer
That's how long it's
All right, great, I want to make sure that was all, that's all I have then, thank you, thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you all for your time.
Thank you all very much. All right, next, we've got the rezoning update.
And Mr. Chair, Mr. Rinaldi, as he comes to the microphone, as you all know, has done a great job here. There's a larger packet, but we're going to kind of skim through it a little bit. Really, the goal of this is to, just another way for the public who's, who's ever listening now at five fifteen, to make sure that they know about, you know, just how to look at the maps, where to find the maps, why we're doing this, where we are in the process, just kind of a general overview. Because obviously, this is a month, you know, we've got two, three months here, public comment. Tomorrow night's our first public meeting in Lakewood Ranch, Lakewood Ranch High School. So really, we just wanted to do a, do a little brief overview here so that, again, another way for the public to know and be informed. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Can you bring up the presentation? Thank you. Good afternoon slash evening. As Mr. Chapman said, we're going to give just kind of a, a quick overview. Okay, we're up, sounds good. This slide deck that we're using here, we're going to actually use during the second public meetings that start tomorrow. I've listed out the, the five meetings, the eleventh through the eighteenth, so for the next two weeks, we'll be taking the show on the road, basically. The key to the public meeting is going through the timeline. We're going to go into some of the specifics that we went through back in February, is why we need to do this. What is policy fifty-one twenty? I'll kind of fly, slide quickly through those slides, we probably don't need to go through that again. Timeline-wise, February was when we did the first board workshop, where we identified we needed to do some level of rezoning as a result of the new projects coming onboard, capacity challenges, as well as the growth projections that we saw countywide. On March twelfth, after we concluded the first round of the five meetings, we put teams together. We actually had four teams, three team members on each team, and they took a specific area of the county, evaluated both at the elementary and middle school level, the existing boundaries, and took a look at what adjustments could be made in order to bring the new boundaries in, in compliance with fifty-one twenty. The fourth team did the high schools, and they did those district-wide. We held a workshop with the principals last week, went through, presented it to them, because we figured that there's going to be a lot of the community talking with the principals. We wanted to make sure that they understood what the decision points were for their specific schools and for their specific boundaries that were created. And today, we set a June tenth. The actual website went up operational on June ninth at five o'clock. And then at six o'clock PM immediately after that, Mr. Barber with Communications sent out a blast district-wide, letting everybody know that the website was active, the maps were now on the website and that they could access, and that the comments would be taken up to August fifteenth, and please review. In addition to that, it highlighted the five meetings that were coming up as well. What we anticipate after the five meetings between June eighteenth and August fifteenth, we'll be receiving feedback from the public. In October, after that August fifteenth date through September thirtieth, we're going to take all of the comments that we're, we've received and kind of craft together a full elementary, full middle school, and a full high school. So we'll have the three levels, the three options, ready to present to the board, either probably initially in workshop, in order to get ready to advertise, and sometime in maybe mid-October, early October, actually be able to have an approved set of maps. Then at that point, that kind of is in line with the choice, and then the, the choice decisions can begin to happen. With the understanding that this is happening in twenty-six, twenty-seven for the elementaries and the middle schools. And then the high school will be August of, August of twenty-seven.
With, with regard to the high school, I got a question about this today by a visitor. With the new high school potentially coming online in twenty-seven, will that then require students nine through twelve? Or are we going to do nine, ten, and then move up each year as we're doing at some of the new middle schools?
That decision has not been made yet. So, I mean, but we'll probably be evaluating it, and there may be a slow ramp up similar to what was done at Parrish as well.
Okay, I wasn't sure how to answer that question, thank you.
Under, we're, we're studying that right now.
So should we wait to talk about the maps until after the presentation?
Are you talking about us talk about the maps?
Well, asking Mr. Rinaldi questions about the maps.
You certainly can, I would wait till after, I, I didn't
I'll wait till after, but, yeah.
Okay, I mean, I don't know if this is, I mean, you may have some specific questions. I don't know if we all need to get in, I wasn't going to ask any specific questions, because I want to wait to hear what the public says and things like that before we, as a board, start reviewing them and looking at them. But if you've got some questions
I, I just have one specific one, and he knows pretty much what I'm going to say. High school maps, options one, two, or three. None of those have the option that I asked about as being, being one of the options, without saying it. You were going to look into that, but it doesn't look like anything changed from the time I spoke to you on that Monday afternoon to now.
Right, those three maps were already generated. We do have a list of comments that were received by, by yourselves, the board members, as well as the principals. So we are looking at that, and our one public speaker today talked about the one area. And true, that area that was south of sixty-four is now going to southeast, as he requested. The area that you were talking about was considering the north of sixty-four, that wedge as well. And that is part of the study that we're going to be doing, because
Mine was more south of sixty-four, in line with the public comment, or not north of sixty-four, so, I know what you're saying, but, okay.
Yeah, so, so that is shown on the map, so maybe more of an expansion of that, south of sixty-four?
I don't, I'm just looking at the map, and I see south of sixty-four being red going
I think it's something we can all get together, yeah.
But, but it's, it's red because that was the former boundary, it's gray on the inside because it's going to southeast.
Okay, I can't see that, but, that's fine.
So that, that area is going to southeast now.
I can see, I just can't see the colors, well.
Then with the public, we'll talk a little bit about why the rezoning, which we did with, with you all back, back in February. We'll do the quick policy overview with, with the group so that the public understands. And then what I've highlighted in yellow is what happens for meeting number two, which is we prevent, present three zoning options along with criteria that are tied to the policy as well. So we actually developed a little, I think it was twenty-four maps, but it's three criteria per zone is the way, is the way we did it. Incorporating this criteria, and when you look at the advantages and, and challenges, you'll see that we've addressed one through eight as, as part of the, as part of the documents as well. Then it says at the second meeting, we're going to present the three. At the meetings, we're going to kind of do a couple different versions. We're going to have the boards, so old-school, they can go through the boards. We're also going to have three monitors as well, and we're going to have someone manning the monitors so that they can cycle through the monitors, zoom in, zoom out as well. So we're going to give them a, a couple different options for looking at the maps. And then the exemptions are the standard exemptions that are in policy. The website, so right now, this is showing up on our main page, it's one of the rolling scrolling banners. When you double-click on the rezoning down below there, that brings you to our landing page, which is the rezoning page. The three buttons in the middle there are critical. The public input takes to let's talk and allows them to make comments, and I'll show that. The middle portion is, is actually an enhancement that we initially did not talk to the public. But by the end of this month, they will have geocoded all of our maps, so that they'll, an individual will be able to put in their address, pick option one, it'll tell them elementary, middle, high for option one, which school they're assigned to. Pick option two and do the same. It's an enhancement that we didn't think we're going to be able to do, but our vendor came back and said they could do it. And then the rezoning information is the, the basic information that we saw there. So when they double-click on the public input, this is the page for let's talk. They'll be able to choose the specific region that they want to make a comment about, or if they want to make a district-wide, and then share the comment, and then identify whether they're a student, whether they're a staff member, whether they're a parent. So that's how the let's talk. We do have four teams that are going to be triaging the let's talk as they come in, and then that information is going to go to the individual teams that did the actual map development. And if there are any critical items that we'll identify, we'll put it on the frequently asked questions, so that we'll keep that as a live document as well. And then going back, this is the general rezoning site, gives the public input once again, and then it identifies the public meetings. The, the top row is the second public meetings, and it'll have the slide deck in there. The middle section are the meetings we did in March, that has a slide deck as well. And then our February fourteenth work session, that has a slide deck. So we've given all of the information that we presented to the board, as well as presented to the public in that section of the website. And then the frequently asked questions, as questions come up, we'll keep that as a live document, and try to respond as quickly as we can to any critical issues that are identified. Then going into the actual schools, this is the way you, you're able to do the dropdown menu for each one of the schools. It gives all three of the options. And then within that, you've got a simplified map, which is just a colored map showing how the redistricting happens. A satellite map, so maybe you can actually find your neighborhood, your home. We give a capacity chart, and then we talk about advantages and considerations. And going through one of the high school ones, this is a typical high school, so if we're looking at option one, that's the simplified map. You can see the actual pink boundary that goes through new triple-A, so that is the old boundary of Lakewood Ranch. So it's kind of an overlay, it shows both the old boundaries as well as the new boundaries. On the left-hand side for Bay Shore High, you can see a gray part going in there, so that's actually giving additional space or, or zone to Lakewood. And you can see that a little better when you actually get on to the, the satellite maps as well. So going back and forth, you're able to pick up some different detail as you go back through the rezoning in the website, on the website. From there, we also have a chart identifying for the, the blue area is the option zone, so it's an estimate. Keeping in mind that we're actually looking at residents. So if that student actually resides in a zone, then we're counting them. Now, if that student happens to choice out, then that happens, which happens with about nineteen percent of our students. They choice internal to the district. But from a rezoning standpoint, we look at, you know, actually sitting in the zone and then a body in the seat as well. So you, you may see when you go through some schools that are showing either overcapacity or undercapacity, but when you look at it, you realize there's a lot of choice that's happening within that specific zone, and we identify that in the write-up on, on the documents. And then you've got your advantages and considerations, and this is where if we have a significant amount of choicing out or choicing in, we bring that up in the advantages and considerations, so you know that. And we considered somewhere around fifty percent, and we did have some elementary schools that had that high a level of choicing out as well. And then, so basically, that's what's out on the website right now. We are already starting to get comments, I know, because my secretary is working on her let's talk right now, so this is kind of the process we're going through.
Awesome, I know a lot of work went into this, not only from the staff standpoint, but also putting it online and, and doing all that kind of stuff. Hopefully, you know, the, the next meetings, the next four or five days, go really well, and we'll get I, I think from a, a board standpoint, you know, it's one thing for us to look at this, but I want to see public comment, I want to see people
Digging in
Commenting and giving input on it. It is, the one question I will ask, and maybe this hasn't been really decided, how is the information going to be relayed to us as board members? So for instance, let's say there's a hundred comments on the new high school. Like, are we going to get, like, per school, per, like, how are we going to see comments from the public?
I believe through the let's talk, we'll be able to do some dashboards, we'll be able to identify
Real questions, yeah.
Items that come up on a regular basis, and, and we'll, we'll try to get reports to you on, on that, so you can see what the comments are.
And I know we, we spoke about this, about us board members being able to get Dropbox or something like that, that we can, or, you know, whatever, you know, that we can look at this and see this. I will say on, now that I'm on the, the computer looking at it, the maps, depending on, I think if I was on my iPad, it'd be different, because I could probably zoom in, but the map, the simplified map on whatever this is, an HP, whatever, whatever operating system it has, only allows me to, to zoom in one time, like, click and zoom in once. Doesn't allow me to scroll all the way in, I don't know if that's user error, or if that's something that we're not allowing.
It's really specific to the device, because we identified that too.
That's what I figured.
On my, on my laptop, I was able to do certain things, but then when I went to the big screen in my office, I was able to easily zoom in, zoom out. On my iPad, I can zoom in, zoom out, even on my phone, I can zoom, and, and that's interesting to look at it on the phone. And that's, when working with IT, they're wanting to make sure that someone could get a, a good experience on the phone, and you can do some more zooming on the phone than I could do on my laptop as well, so it was.
Yeah. I think, I think it's not like downloading as a picture, it's like a link, and so it's not allowing you to, like, really go into zoom. But, I mean, as long as we can do it from other devices, it doesn't really matter.
Yep.
Phones are probably going to be how most people are looking at, looking at these.
And I, I just want to remind the public, if they're still paying, still with us and still paying attention, please, please, please make sure you make your comments through the website. Emailing the individual board members is, is not going to be as effective, because now we've got to keep track of individual emails. We would like all of your comments all in one place, so we're not, you know, getting slips of paper here and there, or an email or something. All of your comments, please put them directly into the website. That way, they don't get missed.
And I would like to thank the twelve team members who put the maps together. I mean, they spent a lot of time, and it was a lot of unique technology for everybody to draw a line and then figure out how many children are in that line, and then draw a different box. It, it was a, some had a great experience, others probably aren't going to talk to me for the next month and a half.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
You're going to have to show me that line, because I can't see it.
Mr. Chapman, I think you have the policies?
Yeah, yeah. So we've, we've got just a couple of policies here that you all just approved to advertise in, in the board meeting. This is the workshop to review them. These policies are now advertised for public comment, and they will be presented at a public hearing on July twenty-second. Really, bylaw zero-one-three-one, bylaw zero-one-six-four, bylaws zero-one-six-five, zero-one-six-five-point-two, zero-one-six-five-point-three, and zero-one-six-six. Those six bylaws, whether they're being rescinded or revised, are all essentially allowing, for the first time, due to statutory change, the ability for the school dis, the school district to, and slash school board, to now advertise public meetings and public workshops on our district website.
Right.
Right? We were still using the old-fashioned way of publishing in a newspaper, paying for that advertisement, waiting. You have to wait till a Sunday publication, no offense to our, our newspaper friends, and, and wait for a Wednesday night publishing and a Sunday night publishing. Well, now we can, with the approval of these on July twenty-second, we can use our district website. So, these policies just kind of outline the, the certain ways we can do that now, rescinding old policies. So, that's essentially what those six policies are about. The, the next two are revising our military leave. You'll see in here, there's a provision that was added to allow for, for federal military service, updating those policies. Eighty-three oh-five, we had a FDLE audit, which is normal course of business, and they wanted this language added. Really, it's our protection of student data added to this particular policy. So we want to, we want to add that to that policy. And then eighty-four thirty-one is, again, just updating some updated language about asbestos in our policy that deals with that. So, kind of a simple revision of some policies, but obviously will help very much to be, be able to advertise them on the district website. So, again, these are out for public comment, and they'll be up for board approval on July twenty-second at a public hearing.
Excellent, thank you. Board members, any questions on those? Pretty straightforward.
I think we're, I'm good.
I don't deal with any toxic hazard waste here.
You would be surprised.
Keep your toxic waste chum, don't bring it to school.
Knock on wood. We don't find any.
All right. So, no, no comments there for, for the policies. So we'll, we'll review those and have those ready to go for the next meeting. Board, great stuff today. Already been in, by the way, already been in contact with Andrea Messina at FSBA. I'll finalize it a day in time for next week, for Tuesday. We're already getting the ready, ready to go for, for Monday, the posting. But for, for her to come in on Tuesday, we'll finalize that and, and get that out. So, just to kind of give you guys a heads up. Other than that, great day today.
All right, thank you.
Long one, it was a good one.
It was.
Thank you, everybody who helped, staff, everybody like that. We are adjourned.